Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board for November 17th. The first item agenda is for a conditional use permit application for Kyle Starkweather down at the airport. So Kyle, if you'd like to just give us a brief overview of what it is you plan to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wait a minute till Craig gets through wheeling his chair through the ass. Okay.
Excellent. So hey, good evening Chair, Board members and members of the audience here. Thanks for taking the time to hear me out. My name is Kyle Starkweather. Myself, my wife are the caretakers of the Leamington Airport. Just want to say, start off by saying that I deeply respect the role that the board plays and our goal is always to work with you, never around you. My goal right now is to provide a clear, factual, and ordinance-based explanation for why the two conditional use permits applications are in front of you. There's two on tonight's application. One is for indoor storage in the existing buildings. It's all five buildings. And the other is for a small indoor golf simulator inside multipurpose building one. Both are extremely simple, very low impact. More importantly, the first one is an exist, a use that already exists. So for indoor storage, it's something that's been passed down from owner to my understanding, that many of the buildings have always been used for. For instance, 65% of our inherited tenants are all indoor storage, non-aviation use. So simply all we're doing with this one is bringing into alignment the conditional use into what the historical use has always been. So therefore, not too much you should find new, other than where the former play garden was, which had gone from being storage to the play garden is being returned back to storage. That's only simply for one season as we plan on putting hangar doors back on and returning it back to a hangar at the end of the season.
You mean the great big building?
Great big building, yeah.
Where are you going to do your golf?
It's going to be in the back of that building, in a 20 by 24 room that already exists.
I remember there are two rooms there.
Yeah, if you remember that little where she had the entryway, that's where the indoor golf is going to be.
Okay.
So the second item, just as straightforward, it's a small indoor golf simulator in the back of building one. No change to the structure, other than one outlet to be moved by a certified electrician, no change in traffic, no impact on the neighbors, no noise, and at most one extra car in the parking lot at one time. So just to be clear, this is not a commercial entertainment center. This is simply something that pilots can do on rainy and gloomy days, of which we have a lot in the winter. And then also, it provides just a small baseline revenue for the airport, for the day-to-day operations. And we think that with the closing of Archie's and some of the limited resources around here, something to do is, you know, hopefully welcomed. I also want to be very clear as to what's not being requested in this conditional use. No concerts, no outdoor events, no camping, no short-term rentals, no large public gatherings, no structural additions, and no extra traffic. So pending your questions.
So your golfing thing is just for pilots? It's not open to the public?
It is open to the public, but mainly we anticipate it being used by our pilots for fun. But it's both, both and.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
What do you plan on storage and storing in the building?
Trailers and cars.
Trailers and cars?
Yep.
Will it be taking batteries out of the cars or unhooking them?
If that's what you require.
Darrell, any questions?
When you say trailers, you mean boat, for boat storage?
I do.
So are you going to store some of the boats outside, too? Not that it makes sense?
No. And there are four trailers outside, which I think we've discussed before, which we're not applying for. We've got a tenant moving out in December 15th, and those are going to be moved into that barn. So taking a little bit longer than expected, but no, no outdoor storage. The plan is to clean up the property, not make it look worse.
I'd rather the question, I don't understand, is the kitchen going with it when you buy it, you're going to get the kitchen part of it, too?
Nope. That's going to stay with the original owner.
That's all I have.
No?
It was pretty thorough here.
Is there a motion to accept Mr. Starkweather's application?
A motion we accept his application?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Victoria, second it. All in favor? Okay. Do we need to do a sidewalk? We've pretty much been in that building. I don't think we...
No, I don't.
You don't? Okay. So there will be...
Well, is it just that one building that you'll be storing things in?
So this is to bring into alignment the fact that things are already being stored in hangars by private owners that rent out. So we're just bringing the whole, all five buildings into alignment.
But you call them all five buildings being stor, storage?
Yes.
Okay, Craig?
I guess. So the five buildings, meaning the ones that are being rented out?
Yes. Yeah. The folks rent the buil-
Some people own those buildings, too, right?
Not the five that are indicated on the map.
So we will hold a public hearing on December 1st, which is our first Monday of the month meeting, and your time will be 7:00.
Sounds great.
And Donna will advertise it in the Portland First Herald and in the Shopper's Guide. And she will send out letters to the abuddos. It's our standard operating procedure, if you will.
Of course. Thank you very much.
So we'll see you then.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming in. Okay, now we will open the public hearing to the mass gathering. Does everybody have a copy of this? There are copies up on the back table there. I think they want to stay and be entertained, Kyle. Has everybody signed in? Good. And everybody have a copy? Good. And John, we're wondering where all your neighbors are. I expected the room to be...
They're in Florida.
I guess. I was very surprised that we don't have many people here tonight. I think how we'll do this is just go through each, you'll see that some of the headings are bolded, so we'll just go down through the bolding ones. And if you have any comment on that particular section, you know, and you can always make comments at the end of the meeting if you want, but just to keep it sort of organized. So the purpose is a pretty standard thing. I don't think I'm going to, because I've had a cold, and I'm going to try to limit my talking. I have water and cough drops, so, but I think the purpose is a pretty standard kind of statement, so we don't really need to read that. So we'll go on to applicability. And under applicability, "No person, corporation, association, or group of any kind shall sponsor, promote, or conduct a mass gathering as defined, or make one's property available for a mass gathering by lease, contract, or otherwise within the town of Leamington until a conditional use permit has been obtained from the planning board and an event permit has been obtained from the select board. Mass gatherings may consist of, but not be limited to, festivals, concerts, entertainment performances, exhibitions, or similar activities, public and political gatherings." So does anybody have any comment on the wording of that paragraph? Seeing none, we'll move on to definitions. We've separated it into two categories, major mass gatherings and minors. Major mass gatherings, "Any gathering attracting or intending to attract a continued audience or congregation of participants of 1,000 or more participants for one hour or more." And then minor gatherings, "Any gathering attracting or intending to attract a continued audience or congregation of participants of 300 participants, but fewer than 1,000 participants for one hour or more. Gatherings of less than 300 participants do not require a conditional use permit from the planning board or a license permit from the select board." And the reason for that last paragraph is, obviously, people have weddings, birthday parties, anniversary celebrations, whatever. We didn't want people to think that if they were going to have a party at their house, they had to come in and get a conditional use permit. So are there any comments under the major or minor mass gatherings section? Yes, Jason.
Jake.
Jake.
Legally, it's Jason, but Jake works. I respond to everything. So I have a question about the, I guess, the ordinance in general. I probably should have asked it back on purpose. Does an applicant get a conditional use permit for mass gatherings, and then that goes in perpetuity for the ownership?
No, it will be in each individual. It's like if they have five mass gatherings a year, it would mean five public hearings.
So you need a, so you need a conditional use permit for every mass gathering?
Correct. And they need an event permit from the select board for every event.
Okay, so I guess my question is, why both, if it's specific to the event?
Because the conditional use permit from the planning board sets out separate criteria from what the event permit from the select board is. Basically, the event permit has been just a single sheet, and the select board has to establish a fee that's associated with that. Like, we have a fee for the conditional use permit application. And theirs is pretty simple. With a conditional use permit, like we just told Mr. Starkweather, everybody, all the abuddos get notified, and we have a public hearing. It's the opportunity for people to express themselves and any concerns they might have. Whereas, the event permit is just a town permit, allowing them to hold the event, for lack of a better way of phrasing it.
Okay. So I guess that's, maybe I'll ask that the select board meeting, like, doesn't seem like theirs is going to be required. I'm not sure what, because you're looking at, with this, what I'm reading, you guys are going way more into depth than, I mean, they're just collecting a fee and signing the permit, right?
Well, no, they have, as we go further through this, you'll see that they also have to collect some sort of a performance bond. And a couple of pages in, there's criteria that they need to be sure. It might be a little bit of duplication, but in something like that, I don't think it's a major problem. But if you, if the people wanted to change wording, or if the selectmen wanted to change wording. Now, they will, once this public hearing is over, and whatever changes we may or may not make, we send this along to them, and then they have to hold a public hearing, because it's going to be a referendum question. And they are the ones who determine what the final language of a referendum question is. Now, so they may decide to change what they want in their event permit section.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yes. Judy? Oh, I would ask everybody, we're just, we are relying solely on this recording, because our secretary's not here this evening. So I'd ask you to state your name and your street address and speak into the mic, so.
Sure. Judy Fullerton, 104 Milton Road. I guess as far as applicability, though, and this is just because it's a public hearing, it seems kind of redundant, and a lot of hoops to jump through to have a, like, to throw a concert. I mean, I just don't understand why we couldn't just run it through the selectmen, why they have to go through a conditional use permit in a public hearing every single time anybody wants to do something. It seems...
Well, I mean, if they want to do something with 500,000 or so people...
I think we would want people to do that.
Well...
That's just my opinion for the, for the record.
When you build a new office building in town, and the language contained in here has been taken from, I think it's six different towns?
That was my next question, is this is like normal protocol?
Standish, Cornish, Buxton, Freiburg, Hollis, Scarborough, seven.
So there is precedent there, wasn't there? Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Yes?
Dennis Doughty, 1 Gosian Farmer. I'm just confused at a couple of things I was just asking. Why doesn't, so it looks like the intent of this ordinance is to give some structure for the town, for mass gatherings. So I have two questions. Why, under 300, does it not require a conditional use permit?
Well, because, like I just said, if somebody's going to have a wedding...
Yeah, but we're talking about, it could be 299. Doesn't require anything. 300, you got to jump through eight loops. It just seems...
There's a cutoff number for everything, I think, Dennis.
So my point would be, why not have it for any kind of gathering that across the town is similar, and not make it to numbers? How are you going, who's going to count whether it's 299 or 301?
Well, I think our main objective in keeping that 300 number in there was that we didn't want to impose conditional use permits. Like, I had my son's wedding in the backyard.
Yeah.
And there are the other people, they shouldn't have to go through a conditional use permit.
I agree with you. I agree with you 100%. I just think that, how are you going to determine?
We're going to...
You're not going to have a clicker and a counter. So the other question is, and I'm not sure if you address it later on, I can't remember, I've gone through this, is does it have to be in one location? So is the...
Give me an example.
Fishing derby. Fourth of July fireworks.
No, 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 no. They, that, those, and if you, if you look further in, any event that's charitable, or any event held by a town office, does not require...
Yeah, I saw that. And why, it might, so we're jumping ahead a little bit, but why not, if you're going to have, if the whole point is to work on sanitation, control, and alcohols, and various things, why doesn't it apply to everybody and not just private things? It seems like, if the intent is for safety, control, and sanitary, and all those types of things, it should apply to every gathering of a certain amount. I mean, I know. So those are my concerns. I just think there, it's, some things are pretty arbitrary that don't make sense unless it goes across the board.
Okay. Does anyone have any comment they'd like to make to that?
Well, I think weddings should be exempt.
What?
I've always believed that, that weddings should be exempt from this.
Yeah.
That what should be?
Weddings.
Wedding, yeah. Wedding, yeah. And statutorily, churches are usually exempt from town, you know, permits, et cetera. And usually, anything that the town holds. Like, the Historical Society had their craft fair here, and they didn't have to have a conditional use permit. I think a lot of it is also a common sense approach, too. But that's my opinion. But we will discuss that. There are two board members that aren't here tonight, and we will take your thoughts under consideration when we all get together. Any more questions on that section? Yes. No, this gentleman hasn't spoken. Yes, sir?
Zach Dinsmore, 118 July Street. I just want to clarify. Did I understand you correctly saying that the fishing derby would not be? Why not?
Because the scouts are a nonprofit organization.
Maybe we're not talking about the same fishing derby. Horn Pond, P'Quocket Lake, whichever you want to call it, fishing derby in February. That one is not put on by the Boy Scouts, that's put on...
But I don't believe they have, they cross the 300 threshold?
Yeah, absolutely.
They do.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know how many individuals here tonight are from P'Quocket Lake, but I am. And I can tell you that every year, the P'Quocket, or that, the P'Quocket Lake Ice Fishing Derby is a nuisance. It is a problem. And I'll be up here a couple of times as we move down through this. But to have that exempt, I think, is...
Is that a for-profit?
I don't know what it's for, but I know that as a tenant on that lake, it is a disaster. I mean, we've gone so far as to, we're not going to be, we have to go rent a hotel to get away from that.
I had no idea.
Yeah, it's a disaster. And the condition that the lake is left in after they leave, and especially for an event put on by the Standish Fishing Game Club, they come to our town, and they make a mess of our lake, and then they walk away and take the profits with them.
Well, that could be, that's the purpose of the public hearing. We're learning something that we didn't know. And we will definitely discuss that. I've made a note.
Yeah.
It's the ice fishing one, right?
Yes. In Feb, it's typically in February, the first or the second weekend.
That's good to know.
But we will definitely, and...
I'd like to hear more. A public hearing, I don't know anything about sixty-five of the lakes. I'd love to hear more.
Dude, am I allowed to speak on that? I mean, I don't want to hold this up too long, but if...
You know, yeah, if you, if you have a few things to say, fine. Just give us some examples.
So some examples as to how that's a nuisance. Fishers show up a day early. They plant themselves on the lake. They begin having fires, open fires on the lake, which is illegal. You're not supposed to have fires directly on the ice. They make noise and race up and down the lake all night long, leading into the beginning of...
They fish at night?
They start drilling their holes at night.
Oh, okay.
So, and they, they're drinking, they're all drunk, they're racing their four-wheelers, or snow machines. And then come 3:00 AM, when the derby starts, they set it off with fireworks.
What?
Yes. 3:00 AM marks the start of the derby, and fireworks go off every year at 3:00 AM. Then, for the remainder of the day, the actions continue. The noise levels are insane all day long. And then they, some, the derby closes at 4:00 PM, but people stay on the lake. They make it an entire weekend thing. And when they leave, they leave behind trash, food all over the...
You are convincing me now that we really have to look into this one, because one of the further conditions in here is that, in any event, they have to clean it up with them, they have to post a performance bond with the select board.
Yes.
And they have to clean up after the event within 48 hours, or they don't get their performance bond back.
And I think that's a good addition to this. I mean, as we go down through this, I have some, I have three things, I guess, that I would add to this, and we'll talk about it more. But just in, generally speaking, the mess they leave behind, I mean, there is biohazard material left, if you understand what I'm saying, on the ice. And as well as food, trash, all that. And this past year, we had a snowstorm right afterwards. It covered all of it. And what happened come springtime? All that stuff directly into our lake, that children swim in. So I, I would like you guys to consider including that in this.
Do you know who sponsors this?
It was Standish Fishing Game Club. And now I spoke to them directly about this.
Yeah.
And she immediately responded to me by saying, "Oh, well, I'm so sorry, here's somebody else to call." So I called, and it ended up being somebody from Fishing Game, and somebody that they were close with, and he essentially just brushed me off.
Well, all right. Well, you have our word. If anybody here disagrees, they can say so. But we will definitely, definitely look into that.
And if you happen to have that contact information to pass to us, that would be helpful.
I do. Okay.
Do you have to call the game warden when they were...
When they were out there?
Yeah.
I was told that the game wardens were already on site, but there's, there's so many people out there, they can't catch everything. And it's, I don't know how they didn't catch some of this stuff. But that's, you know, I can't speak to...
Because if you're driving recklessly, I mean, they could ticket you for that.
Sure.
See, one of, one of our issues here in town is that we do not have a local constable. We rely upon the county or state police to cover issues. The townspeople have voted a couple of times to vote it down. And so that's, that doesn't mean it can't be addressed. It just means that it's not quite as convenient not having a local constable who could be there.
Sure.
How long, may I ask, how long you been in town?
I, well, my family's been in Leamington for three generations.
Oh, wonderful.
But I've been, I've, I've lived here since 2012.
Okay.
Myself, yeah.
Just curious, that's all. Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Yes, Jake?
So, first thing, I don't see where charitable organizations are exempt.
Well, it does, it does, we'll get there.
It says that they aren't charged a fee, but it doesn't say they don't have to have one.
We'll get there. We'll discuss that when we're here.
So, yeah, I didn't, I looked, I didn't see where they were exempt. So I think they have to do one, according to this. But the, back to the first page, I noticed that in the definition of the major and minor, it talks about "any gathering attracting or intending to attract." But then, when it says 300 or less are exempt, it just says gatherings of less than 300 are exempt. So should that say intending to attract less than 300? Because, like, the gentleman here said already, that, like, if 301 people show up, I mean, you weren't intending it, or...
You can, so you can use common sense, but you're, I will take, intending to attract as...
Well, lawyers don't use common sense. They look, they just look at what's written. So I'm just, I'm just suggesting that we try to make it as, as little as possible. Exactly.
Gotcha. John, did you...
I do, but may I address this in the following page?
Well, yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather do it section by section. Okay.
It's a similar subject.
Okay, all right. So is there any more comment on the, under the definitions of major, minor mass gatherings? Or can we go on to event coordinator? Okay, we'll move on to, so basically, "Event coordinator/operator, the person or organization responsible for the event. Permittee," which my computer doesn't like as a word, "the person named in the application." Is there any comment on those two bolded sections? It's basically seeing what they are. The next one is nonprofit organization and churches. And it defines it, because this is under definitions. "A corporation designated as a not-for-profit corporation by the United States Internal Revenue Service. The fee for a conditional use permit or an event permit is waived for this entity." Is that something that someone wanted a comment on?
The fee is waived.
No, if the fee is waived, it means they don't have to come in for a permit. Because the fee is associated with the permit. Yes, Jason?
I think we were discussing this, and I think we agreed that the permit fee was waived, but the, the following of the ordinance was still intact for these events, because they can't just do whatever they want. They, they don't pay the fee. But I was under the assumption, when we were discussing it, that it was going to be, they followed, they still have to get the conditional use permit, it's just the fees are waived for the nonprofit.
Now, see, I, how did the rest of you on the board read that? When we had our discussion?
I didn't think anybody was exempt except weddings, basically.
Okay. Well, actually, this, you know what, this, just, just give me one second, please. I think what we just read was the, what, what the definition of a nonprofit is, and you could very well be right.
I think when we get further down the road, you, you have it in here, that they're exempt from the fees, but not the actual, I just wanted to nip that right now.
But if they're, if they're still under the 300...
Yes, exactly. Under the 300, and, and under the 300, nobody has a fee or a conditional use anyway, so. Okay.
Okay. So that was just what the definition of...
But they still should follow the sanitation rules, even though, but that's on themselves, personally?
Well, if they have to come for the conditional use permit...
Then it's on.
That would be part of the notice of decision, and what they have to do for, for, in order to get the permit. But right now, that little, two sentences, just, the first sentence describes what they are, and the second sentence says they don't have to pay the fee. Okay? Everybody comfortable with that one? Okay. Charitable organizations. "Any person or entity that holds itself out to be organized for any charitable purpose, or that solicits, accepts, or obtains contributions from the public for any charitable purpose. This provision in, the provisions in this ordinance do not apply to events sponsored by MSAD, MSAD 6 School Department, or any other agency of the town of Leamington." Yes, David?
David sells our wellback rope. I believe that the town itself, and churches, and the school board, or the school system itself, should still follow the ordinance that we're going to place on the town citizens, and just waive fees. So I think they should apply with charitable organizations.
So if they, if they have over, if they have...
Because who's to say the town has an event over 300 people? We allow people to come in, they leave, and they destroy the place. We're still at fault for it. We're still going to clean it up. But I think we should still follow the policy that we're going to place on our citizens, as a town and a school board.
Okay, so that...
Just waive the fees.
So the last sentence called, "The fee for a conditional use permit or an event permit is waived." So you're saying the same is what we did under the other. Put that sentence in, but they still have to come for the conditional use permit?
Correct. I believe everybody should follow the ordinance to the T. We can say and state which type of ordinances are churches, charitable, non-charitable, who do not pay the fees. Because at that point, like for ourselves, at the town level, we're not going to use taxpayer money to pay a fee to go back to the taxpayers.
Right.
But I think we should still follow the ordinance, as far as paperwork goes, continue use permits.
One of the things that's going through my mind right now is that the responsibility for this, a lot of this stuff is sitting at the end of the table here, Craig. And I honestly think that most charitable organizations and such are pretty responsible. I'll use the Historical Society example as again. When they had their fair here, you didn't have to come in and clean up trash and...
Correct. But, you know, sometimes you have a bad egg. Correct. But, you know, sometimes you have a bad egg. It goes until it gets rotten.
Exactly.
So, yeah. And as far as weddings go, if I can go back a little bit, if we're not gonna hold them to the ordinance based on size, then they should still at least come and get a one-day permit.
Okay.
Because we're still gonna have a mass amount of people in town, if, even if it's not even three hundred. So-
Well, you know, it's interesting because-
Because I live next to a barn that has weddings, so-
I was just gonna go back to that. In fact, there was a, um, a couple, was it, what road was that on? Do you remember, Gerald, that they had that barn that they were going to have weddings, and they had the upstairs, you know, loft around it, and, and we granted them. Can you remember what that was? They had to come in for a conditional use permit. But they, their, their property was being, this was not a one-time event.
Yep.
This was a property that was being, uh, turned into a business-
A venue.
To run events.
Yeah.
But are you, are you suggesting that if I have a wedding for my grandson in my backyard, I should come and get a permit for it?
Yeah, I think so, because you're a very popular woman. I'm sure more than three hundred people are showing up.
Actually, we denied that permit on that barn.
Yeah.
Because the road was over on San Pon.
Yeah.
Sam, was it San Pon?
Yeah.
I don't think that was.
I remember going up a hill.
But I think that we should just not say, hey, it's a wedding, and disregard it.
I know which one you're thinking of. No, this is a different one. We did deny the San Pon one because of the road condition. Something Hill Road, what, come on, help me here.
Pine Hill?
Um, Allen Hill?
Shaving Hill?
No, Shaving Hill.
Yeah. That's all I-
Is, is Allen Hill, does anybody?
Allen Hill makes sense.
I can't think of it. That, that, I know which one, we did deny that, but this other one was an area that I had not been in before, and it took me a little bit to find it, and it was on a rise, it was back off the road in the woods, and, and the gardens were there and everything.
Yeah, that was Allen Hill, I think, but didn't they sell that?
Yeah. Well, I, they got the permit for it, whether they ever turned it into a event. Okay, all right, okay. All right. So, uh, any more comments on, under that? Yes, Jake?
So, um, the, in the paragraph that says the fee for conditional use permit or an event permit is waived for this entity, for the charitable, sorry, for the nonprofit organizations-
Yep.
And the section that says the school board doesn't have to follow the rules, and the town of Leamington doesn't have to, whether we keep those or not, I feel like they should be in a different section. So, maybe when you're in here talking about fees or something to that effect, you should almost move it, move it out of the definitions, because that's talking about like whether or not they're paying a fee. Let's move it out of the definition, so we keep the definitions, just what is the entity, or what are we defining?
Okay.
And then if we wanna make special exceptions for them, we put them under a fees category or something like that, if they don't pay the fee.
Okay, thank you.
Just a suggestion.
Now, that makes sense.
Any more comments on that particular section? Performance guarantee. A performance bond issued by an entity authorized to do business in Maine, cash escrow, or other financial guarantee acceptable to the select board in an inform approved by the town attorney. So, that's just the definition. That doesn't say who it applies to or not, it's just what the definition of what a performance guarantee is. And it's up to the select board to determine. I know there was one type of performance bond that the last attorney didn't recommend, but I can't remember what it is. Uh, the definition of a person. Any natural person, sole proprietorship, partnership, corporation, or other entity. That's just the definition. Event operator owner. The event operator owner shall be required to be on-site at the mass gathering at all times. The operator will be the main contact person for the town before, during, and after the mass gathering, and will be responsible for facilitating any inspections required or requested by the code enforcement officer. Once again, that's just the description. Yes, Bonnie?
Bonnie Lord Loughlin, Cape Road. Um, thank you, Joyce. I think what you've just done now is finished the definitions, and in looking at this, uh, you know, a lot of work has been done in this. I think it's great. There's a form issue, sort of definitions on the first page, and then we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, it looks like nine definitions. So, they, to me, they should be, uh, set up underneath the topic definitions. I think that would help clarify.
Yeah, well, that's what they are, um, that's what they are. Maybe I should put those in a larger font. Definitions includes the mass and minor gatherings, the event, who the event coordinator is, the permittee, da-da-da-da-da.
A could be purpose, B could be applicability, C could be definitions.
Oh, you want me to do the A, B, C?
You see what I mean? Just because it'll keep us all clear. We're, we're sort of drifting into fees and, and then it looks like we're going into D or four, whatever you, or the requirement of a conditional use permit.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you.
And, and also, I'm just wondering, the definition of permittee and the definition that you just read, event operator owner, uh, who, the person named in the application is-
The permittee.
Give me an example, though. Will the permittee ever not be the same person as the event operator or the owner?
No, I don't, I don't think one really depends upon the other as far as the definitions are concerned. Just making it very clear that whoever comes in for the application, they are the permittee, and in the, further into the bulk of the, of the ordinance, permittee that, that, um, uh, that, uh, term is used. So, person is just, it's sort of legalese, quite frankly, just-
Well, that's really what I'm thinking of, just to make it easy for the town to be able to go back to the person who's responsible, to make sure everything goes right, so.
Any more comments on that? Yes, John?
Uh, Jack Puttrick, Thirteen Evergreen. Um, regarding the, um, contacts, event operator owner, I would suggest a primary and maybe a secondary emergency contact, so you have a plan B, if, if you need to call someone importantly for some important reason, you wanna have an extra number to call.
So, you might say, um, well, do you want to-
His deputy or something like that, there's always gonna be a helper.
The event operator owner or their designee?
Well, and/or, well, you need to have a pla- a backup plan for, you know, an emergency like that, uh, if you need to call him. Official, if town officials or police or fire, whoever, need to call someone, they should have an alternate plan, because Plan A doesn't always work. And it's not, it's not, it's not an imposing requirement, I don't think.
Okay.
And I don't know if that goes under definitions, or-
What would Plan B be?
Oh, is it a deputy?
An alternate person.
Have a person.
His brother-in-law, I mean, somebody to call, better than having nobody.
Absolutely. A second person to call would make sense.
Yeah, okay. All right, we, we can adjust that. Any more questions? Yes, Jake?
So, again, just about like the structure of the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
The event operator owner is the same thing as the event coordinator owner, right? Or owner, event coordinator operator, that's the person responsible for the event. So, this one, the event operator slash owner, tells what we want that person to do, and should be part of the ordinance down below somewhere, rather than a definition, right? Because that's not a definition, that's saying what we want that person to do.
Okay.
The operator owner, we've defined-
I hear you.
-as the person responsible for the event.
Yeah.
So, this is saying what that person's supposed to be doing.
That's correct.
So, that should be in, again, my opinion.
Any more comments on that one? Okay, we'll move on to what will now be D, requirement. It should be requirements of a conditional use permit or event permit for mass gatherings. No person may sponsor, promote, operate, or hold any mass gathering event that attracts three hundred or more people unless a conditional use permit from the planning board and an event permit from the select board is obtained. The permitting procedures shall be administered in the following manner. One, the applicant shall submit thirteen copies of the application and all other related and required information to the planning board, not less than ninety days prior to the proposed event. Upon receipt of the application, the planning board shall immediately forward copies to the select board and the town manager. We need to talk a little bit about that one. Two, the required non-refundable app, application fees to both boards shall be paid at the time of the submission. Three, the applicant shall post a performance guarantee or bond in an amount reasonably necessary to ensure prompt payment for all damages caused by attendees or employees to public and private property resulting from or in connection with the mass gathering. Promptly following the mass gathering, the town shall release the performance guarantee if the operator pays all cleanup and public costs within forty-eight hours after the mass gathering. And four, the standards listed below and the relevant conditions detailed in the Town of Leamington zoning ordinance for a conditional use permit shall be followed. So, are there any comments on that? Judy?
Judy Fullerton, again. Um, my question is similar to the one I had before. So, if you have like an event, say somebody opens an event venue, like the wedding place you were talking about, they're gonna have to get a conditional use permit every single time they held, hold an event?
No, this, no, this was, this, the, this was a facility-
Okay.
-that had been turned into an event, um-
So, those would be exempt from this situation?
No, no, no. They would come in for a conditional use permit.
Okay.
But they, if they had three weddings, they would not have to come for-
Okay.
Because all the criteria for any wedding or anniversary party or whatever they held there, those conditions would be listed in the original conditional use permit.
Okay.
And they would have to be followed each time.
Right.
This mass gathering is, um, you know, something similar to the concert that was-
Right, so just like one-off events.
So, that would have, each time they had one, they would have to come in for a permit.
Okay.
Because it could vary in size, it could vary in a number of things.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
Any other comments on this section? Yes, Jake? Jack? I get my J as Jack. As long as I don't call you Joyce here, okay.
Okay. Regarding, uh, paragraph one of this section.
Mm-hmm.
Um, applicant shall submit copies of the application. Now, in that application, do we get to see what that might be, and, uh, adi-
I, I know fir-, I know in the, um, when the, when the Swanson family submitted an email, they wanted, um, immediate notice. Um, we, when this, uh, application comes in, we would set up a, they would come to the planning board, just like Mr. Stockweather did tonight, and, you know, everybody who listens to us would hear it. When the abuddhas are notified is when the public hearing is held. And I, I am not willing, personally, this is a personal opinion now, I am not willing to, uh, have someone at the ninety day prior to notify people and then notify them again. They, they legally have to be notified for the conditional use permit. And then that holds another public hearing, which gives everybody the opportunity to come in.
Right, right. Now, what I, what I'm asking is not what he will respond on the application as to which questions will be asked on the application. One, one particular example would be, um, do you have liability insurance? How much do you have? Or that kind of thing will be on the application?
Those are the things that we cover at the conditional use permit process.
Right, okay.
And, and the selectmen also reinforce it when they do the event permit. So, there's double, um, you know.
Right. So, would that be codified somewhere as to what the kind of thing should be on that application?
I think a little bit further in, we address those things.
Okay.
We can, if we haven't, but-
All right.
I thought you asked me if the public should be notified when they submit it.
No. That'll be your decision to, if they meet the requirements of the, of the, of the ordinance, and whatever rules you have to meet, that's your job, really. We can't interfere in yes or no.
Well, at the public hearing, like this-
Later, when it's all done. Not done, but, uh, application filled out and approved or not by you guys. Yes. Because we'll just slow it down. We don't wanna do that.
Well, I, I personally, that's my personal opinion. I, I, I think that this ample notice given when, when we, when we advertise for the public hearing.
Yep.
And, um, it's, it's worked for forty years, so, you know, if it's not broken, don't fix it, I guess, is my thought.
Liability insurance is a big one. It's just, you know.
Well, I'm, like I said, that would be something that would be covered.
By, at the board level, at the board level.
By the board level and at the select board level when they do their event permit. They would reinforce of those things are covered.
Okay.
And that the information is-
All right. That's it. Yep.
Any other? Jake, did you have a, no, David?
All right. Maybe you can clarify something for me, Joyce? And I'm sure we'll talk about it later. You keep pointing at me. David Wellback Road. Oh, David Sellsar. Uh, your performance guarantee and bond, so, we're gonna add a bond to a private citizen on their private property to clean up their own-
No.
-event?
The applicant has to pay that, or present that bond, has to submit that bond. If the owner of, let's say that, I don't know, Mr. Tiedemann wants to lease out his property for an event, whoever is gonna do that would have to come in and go through this process, and they would be the ones to put up the performance bond, not Mr. Tiedemann. And I don't mean to pick him out, but I, it's the first thought that came to my head.
Yeah. So, I, myself personally, I just have an issue with charging somebody for their own property cleanup, and then literally having the town come in to do so.
It would be the applicant.
So, if I can bring up an, an event that we just had recently, it was a private airport for public use.
Right.
And we wanted to put a bond on him. It's a private airport, private property. Why would the town be obligated to go clean it up if he doesn't clean up his own property?
Well-
Which is my question. And, um, I can see it happening if somebody wanted to do an event on town property. So, if we rented out the ball field, or our own parking lot, or, um, Old Town Hall, we can put a performance bond on that, and if they don't clean up town property, then we can keep it or force them to clean.
The, in the first instance that you cited, where it's a private person and a separate entity rents, leases, however, that person's property for an event.
Okay. So, what if it's a private person doing their own event?
The, the private land owner in that circumstance is not responsible for putting up the bond. It's whoever is going to run the event, whoever, the company or the whatever that's going, the event operator is the one who is the applicant. Applicant has to pay the fee, not the private owner.
Okay. So, I think there's gonna be need more clarification here, because if I wanna throw a party with three hundred and one people on my own property, and I'm the event coordinator-
I think let's use a little bit of common sense.
I know, but I'm just saying, I've already seen this in here, and I'm a pretty common sense person. I'm, I'm gonna be a little upset if you're trying to put a bond on my own event that I planned, facilitated on my own property.
Well, a little while back, we said we wanted that, so-
Who, me?
No.
Okay.
But, um, um, so you think that I'll just-
I think it just needs to be reworded differently, like you said, right? So, if I hire somebody to come on my property and throw an event, sure, that event person should clean it up, right?
They're responsible if you make sure they did it.
Yeah. And the bond-
But then, uh, then I can make that choice. Yeah, that trash can sit there.
So, I agree with you. I don't think you should need a bond, right?
Correct.
No. You as the pro- we have never, we have never intended that the private land owner has to put up the bond.
But what if I'm the private land owner and the event person?
Unless they're the applicant. And if you're gonna have five hundred people, then yes, you do have to put up a bond.
On my own property.
Yeah.
Liability of the landowner?
Well, that's what maybe we can talk about. If you wanna change it, I'm just saying.
I'm just throwing things out there. I'm not, I'm not arguing the point. It's just, if it's my land, my event, I throw it, and you want me to have a bond, say sixty-five thousand, to clean up my own property, I'm gonna be like-
Quite frankly, there are some-
It's my own property, so.
It would be nice if there were some bonds that cleaned up-
Well, we have ordinances for that, hopefully. Junkyards.
The best example of bond is the fishing derby on Long Island Lake.
I'm thinking if you have an event on, not my own property, right?
Very own lake.
Nobody owns the lake. Nobody owns a lake, nobody owns water in town, they should have a bond to clean it, right? If they're gonna use our ball field at the town hall here, they should clean it. That's when I think the bond should go into effect. But if I'm a private owner, I'm just throwing a party, and I invite the whole town over, and they mess up my property, that's on me to clean up, not the town to come in because I say, nope. Because now you're obligating the town to come clean my property. Guess what I'm gonna do? Not clean my property.
Obviously, we need to talk about that one, too.
I know. I'm just, I think it just needs to be worded a little differently. So if it's gonna be the event person that needs a bond on somebody's property, then we need to word it that way. And I know it seems a little nitpicky, but if I'm nitpicking it now, somebody can nitpick it later.
Yep.
But is the planning board actually taking over for what the landowner should be doing? In other words, it should be up to him whether he wants the bond to clean up or not.
Well, but that's what we do about a lot of things. I mean, you know, junkyards, we make sure that they clean up their land. It's their land.
Yeah.
We don't want it to look bad for the town. And same thing at your house, you leave a whole big mess and your neighbors complain.
Yeah, but the person who owns the land is not gonna let these people come in and trash it.
Some people. See, I think that's what it comes down to. There's people that definitely don't.
I think some people trash their own land, they have unlicensed vehicles all over the place.
I ain't talking junkyard.
No, I'm talking about private property where they have four, five, or six junk cars around, and the ordinance says you can't have more than three unlicensed. I mean, some people do, don't care what their property looks like. I can cite several instances.
What's that got to do with the bond?
Well, we can, I don't wanna get-
Yeah, because that's a whole different ordinance, I'm just talking about the bond.
All right, I got you. Jason, you've had something.
Yes, I wanna follow that up. So, Jason Webster, Freedom Way. The whole point to that is for what I'm dealing with right now in town. My neighbor has a mess, and I gotta deal with it daily, weekly. The point of this performance bond is that when they have a party at my next-door neighbors' and they make a just gigantic mess and it blows all over my property, why do I now have to spend my time, my money to pick it up? No, the performance bond there says, okay, the town's gonna come do it, and I'm gonna feel much better as a abutter, and that's what it's here to do, is protect the abutters. It's, I understand the private property, and I am not one to infringe on private property, but in the protection of our abutters and the mess they can leave, so they leave twelve porta-potties there tipped over. Water, the wells are right there, I mean, we gotta use some common sense here, and this is what this performance bond is. It's not over the top, but it's gonna be basically what, what it would be to pick it up, plus fifteen percent. I've already spoken to the town's attorneys about this. So that's my take on it, not, you know, going infringing on people's rights. It's protecting the people's rights, too, so.
I hear you, thank you. Any other comment?
So the owner should put up the bond.
Well, I-
That's what you're saying.
No.
I agree, the owner should put the bond up.
Jake, did you have a?
So I understand what Jason's saying, and I understand what David's saying. I feel like we need to remove the private property out of there, because you're asking, or you're going to be asking that this person has liability insurance. So if they do damage to somebody's private property, wouldn't that be a claim on their liability insurance for that? So are we, I mean, and then the other thing it says on here is that you're gonna release that-
If they clean it up within forty-eight hours.
Once they clean it up and any public costs within forty-eight hours. Well, Jason's yard isn't a public cost until-
They don't pick it up?
I don't know, I guess he decide, I mean, I'm just picking on you because you were commenting, but at what point is Jason's yard a public cost?
If Jason's neighbor has a party and they leave one or two porta-potties or forty-two kegs of beer or whatever it might be on his property.
On his property.
On his property. In, in, in holding there his neighbor's event, if his neighbor's partygoers leave this on Jason's property, Jason's neighbor has forty-eight hours to get it cleaned up, not Jason. But so that's what the bond is for. If that person doesn't clean up his own yard and Jason's property, then that's where the bond would come in for the town to, and they would not get their bond back if the town has to go in and clean up the mess. That's the whole point of this.
So I guess, who, would Jason, the injured neighbor party, have to go to Craig and say, there's kegs on my property, I need it cleaned up? And is that all gonna happen in forty-eight hours?
Craig is the inspector.
Who's the enforcer?
Craig is the enforcer. We do not, you know.
I guess that's what I mean, it's like, who's, who's Jason?
Yeah, he goes to Craig.
How does it become a public cost?
Because Craig, as an example, Craig goes down after forty-eight hours and there are still forty-two kegs of beer and a tipped-over toilet. He would have the, have the fire department or the highway department go down and clean it up and use the bond money to do that. So the applicant does not get their money back, their bond money back, until he gives the okay. He has the authority to say to the select board, okay, they've cleaned up all their mess, they can get their money back.
So is he gonna do an after-event inspection at all of these events? The next morning?
Forty-eight hours. The applicant has forty-eight hours-
After the event.
After the event, to clean up everything.
Even if it's on the event property?
I don't care if it's on my property, if it's part of that, they gotta come and clean it up, yes. I mean, it's their responsibility, their guests made the mess, that's what the bond is for. The bond is to protect the town and the abutters.
Why would the town go clean it up?
Well, if the person doesn't-
But they would hire it out to somebody.
They hire it out, exactly.
Whatever, yeah, exactly.
To one of the duct removal places.
I mean, they can, I don't care who they hire, but they would use the bond money, they would use the bond money to hire out or use highway people or however they want to do it. That's not our decision. Our decision is to make sure that there is the money and the means to clean up after an event, should that be necessary.
Would that be a cash bond?
It's up to the select board, we don't determine what kind of bond, they have to determine what kind of bond they want to set, in conjunction with what the attorney says, town attorney says.
So are we-
I don't understand why that's a problem.
Are we bonding? Well, it's just, it's weird that we're holding a bond for you to clean up your party.
Then don't hold the party. Don't vote for the mass gathering thing.
We'll keep it under three hundred.
Keep it under three hundred people. I mean, come on, you know, when you have a vast number of people anywhere, there's a mess afterwards. I don't care whether it's a wedding or your kid's birthday party, somebody has to clean it up. And this says that the applicant who comes in with their conditional use permit application, and then they go to the select board to get their event permit, the select board says, yes, you have to post a hundred thousand dollars or a forty thousand dollar bond, just to be sure that you have, everything is back to its natural state, its normal state. And if you don't, we're gonna use your money to clean it up. If you do, you get your money back. And Craig will go forty-eight hours later and look at the site and talk with the abutters to be sure, or if an abutter has a concern, they can call Craig or whatever. But Craig doesn't have to go, don't worry, I'm not saying you have to go door-to-door to all the abutters, but I'm just saying that, you know, it's a means of protecting the abutters and protecting the town. God only knows we have enough messes in town.
Oh, I agree. I guess my other question is, has an attorney reviewed this?
Not yet, because we're waiting for all the input before it goes to the-
Okay.
And the other piece is that the fact that it's in writing, it will make it so that people will pay attention. If it's not in writing, they might say, well, what are you gonna do about it? It's good to have things in writing saying, this is what we'll do about it. And I'd say most of the people will be compliant, there might be some that aren't.
Yeah, I think most people, I agree with you, Victoria, most people would do.
I'll just two questions.
Yep, okay, who else?
I and Bonnie.
But I'm gonna call on Bonnie first, and I'll call on you.
Thank you, Bonnie Loflin, again. I appreciate this discussion, I know there are different sides, I sort of have different sides, too. I think some of the other people who are here tonight are anticipating kind of more exciting parties than I might be able to have, and I think that's great. So I'm just thinking about what if I had a party for only two hundred and fifty people? What rights do I have now?
Go ahead and hold your party.
For, let's take that, I'll change that. Let's say I live next door to one of these exciting party people who only had a party for two hundred and fifty people, but as an abutter, I experienced porta-potties that were turned over, kegs of beer rolling over into my property. What right do I have now to get any help cleaning up?
I guess you'd have to work with the applicant or your neighbor.
That's an interesting point now, though, I mean, it is. And what, what is the answer, sorry?
That if it's under three hundred, there is no performance bond, and there is no conditional use permit or whatever it might be.
Right, I mean, right now, there isn't anything, anyway.
Dennis is shaking his head up.
Well, my, it was my comment to begin with, I think.
Microphone, thank you.
Dennis Doughty-Goshen-Farmer, my comment to begin with was, I just think that putting an arbitrary number of two ninety-nine to three oh-one, bond is an exact point. I mean, the, the amount of damage from two hundred and ninety-five people can be a lot worse than a thousand people if it's depending on-
Depending upon.
Depending on the event. And then, so you either gotta have something that kind of is in place for everybody, or I guess nobody. But I, I don't disagree with what you're trying to do, I just think there's some finance in there that are problematic.
And just to, just to add something else right now while we all think about this, I guess, refused on the lawn is one thing, but what opportunity do I have now as an abutter to, let's say, noise that goes on all day long at a party next to me? Or, I don't know, smells, smells that go on, like a crazy odor of petroleum, something, I just can't remember. Is there anything in the ordinance now?
I, there isn't to the best that I can click in my mind immediately, but if you had a noise issue, you would call, well, the select board probably, and they would-
State police.
Oh, the state police.
And just, because isn't there a, like, nine or ten o'clock noise ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if it's going on all day long, and it really was that bad, once again, we don't have a local constable, so you'd have to call the state police.
And Joyce, to your point about the local constable, I hear what you're saying, but you, you may remember also that whoever we might ever have and who we did have some years ago, they too only work forty-hour weeks or less.
That's what the town hired them for, the town, they, that was a stipulation the town put on them.
Well, I'm still trying to invite us to just remember that they can't be there twenty-four seven, even if they're in the town.
It's impossible. I hear you, Bonnie, I hear you. Did I say another hand about this? Yes, Kyle.
Kyle Stockweather, Leamington Airport. Am I allowed to speak? I just wanted to make sure that's all right. Okay, first off, I applaud what we're trying to do, I think the process needs to be changed and refined. I think we all learned some good lessons this past year. However, unfortunately, I think we're a little off-center from where we need to be, because I think instead of making it clearer, it's starting to make it more muddy. I'm gonna point to the bond issue that we've talked about a few times. Hopefully, my attorney would probably rip that apart, because it's very unclear, and anytime you allow the town, instead of a defined standard, to just set their own, you're gonna end up back and forth in court. Probably not by me, because I don't have that much money, but someone who does have a lot of money, right?
That, that's why this will go before the town attorney, before it goes for vote.
For sure, yeah. I just wanna caution the town on that. This is my two cents. My other two cents is, as far as two different fees, can't it just be one fee? You know, instead of one to the board? So I guess that brings me to my third point. As this goes on, it's gonna end up before a lot of different people, I think we really need a more defined A, B, C, D step.
Well, it's just the way our local government is set up, basically.
It, I agree, and I think this is a good time to review that and say, hey, does this process really work? Because it's, it doesn't, with the way it's written, it's gonna be very confusing for someone like me to come in and say, I wanna do something, and not that I'm going to, I'm just saying that it would be. Who am I talking to? There's a lot of different people, left-handers talk to the right, and I don't think this addresses that problem. That's just my two cents.
Okay, interesting. I think that-
I think it's needed, don't get me wrong. We need this.
But I think traditionally, in this town and with the local town meeting form of government we have, and we have two separate elected boards, this board's elected, the select board, and we're elected for different purposes. One mandated by a lot of state laws from our position here, that when you, I don't know why coming before two boards is an issue, I guess, I don't quite understand why it's a problem.
I'm just saying that the, the burden gets raised quite a bit when you start dealing with, we've got the planning board, we've got the select board, now we've got the fire chief, right? It's an ill-defined process.
But he's involved in any conditional use permit, whenever we, as a, as a select board, whenever we feel that the fire chief's advice is needed or warranted, he addresses it.
For sure.
This isn't something, this isn't something new to include the fire chief, in, you know, if there's a subdivision, let's say, and we feel that he's, we need his advice on something, we ask him.
Of course.
Yeah. So he doesn't have a vote here, he just has, like he would on a Dollar General store coming in, and he had something specific he wanted, he would give the recommendation. And it wouldn't be up to the applicant to go to him, like it says in here, the planning board would see that he got the information he needed if they, you know.
Absolutely, okay. I was just saying, my two cents, and I would say as far as some of the bond issues, going back to that, most of that is all civil. You, I would just, I would let lawyers handle that offline, I wouldn't involve the town in that.
Well, you know, once again, the town, the select board has always been responsible for handling bonds in this town. I mean, it's just-
Every town's different, not something I-
Yeah, it's just the tradition.
Yeah.
Who would, who would handle it?
So if I had a problem with my neighbor and I couldn't work it out amicably, my lawyer would call their lawyer, you know, that's how, that's how all-
It's a neighbor-to-neighbor thing.
Exactly, and so that's what we've been discussing, is, you know, if my neighbor doesn't clean up their property-
Yeah, but only, in what we're discussing here tonight, it's only as it relates to a gathering, not your everyday interaction with who your neighbor might be.
Yeah, however the town wants to handle it, it's a town that's just my two cents.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it. Any other comments? Judy?
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback what, is it Kyle? What he was saying, I do think that, you know, as the town grows and everything, I do think this is an unnecessarily cumbersome process to have to go through two board. I get it, I've lived here forever, I know how it works, but I do think that we should at least move towards streamlining it, because if, I mean, you do want people in the town.
Unless you want to do a charter commission and change the form of government, like Standish has, a town council that they do everything.
Oh, I know, I work there.
And it's really, it's really going to two boards.
Yeah. I understand, I just think that, again, this town is growing, and we want business and events and everything here, and I think it's, again, this is just a public comment, I know it's not an easy solution, but I think it is unnecessarily complicated. And it's going to deter people from doing stuff. And I don't think that's what we want, I mean, some people want that, there's a lot of those people in the town, too. But I think you're gonna see a lot of those if we're holding public hearing after public hearing after public hearing after public hearing. And it's just, it is gonna get really cumbersome, so just something to think about.
There really is basically only one public hearing, and that's for the conditional use permit.
Right, but for every event, if people start doing events in town, it could get a little squirrely. And again, that's just my opinion, I'm not, I just think that we might wanna be thinking that down the road, because we do want people to do stuff, we want to have stuff locally, at least I do, maybe not everyone, but it's just a thought.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Zach Dinsmore. We've heard a couple of individuals talk about trying to make this easier to have a mass gathering or a minor mass gathering in this town. And she spoke about having some opposition to making it easier, I'm one of those individuals. I spent some time living in Portland, there's a reason why I moved back to this town. It's to get away from the lunacy of mass gatherings all the time, everywhere, noise, litter, all that. I live here for peace. I think there should be a little bit of heartburn to bring a mass number of people together. So I just wanted to be on record, you know, so that it's known that there is an opposition to making this as simple as snapping your fingers, and you've got 1,000 people gathered. Well, no, I understand what you're saying, but, yeah, but I moved back here for the peace and quiet, and I don't want it, and town growth, I understand, more money, all that stuff. Some of us enjoy our peace and quiet being out here, and that's why we're here. So I appreciate that there is a few more steps involved in getting one of these permits. I just wanted to be on record for that.
But I'd like to limit the traffic that goes back in front of my house too, but that's pretty hard to do.
Well, I'm not, I don't understand how that pertains to.
I didn't used to have a lot of traffic when I moved there.
Yeah.
Now there is. I mean, that's how towns go, they get bigger.
No, I understand, I'm not arguing about a town getting bigger. The point I'm making is that having large mass gatherings in Leamington, Maine, is not a commonplace, and we don't want, I don't think we want this to be the event center of, you know, we're not going to build a civic center here.
I agree, you can't do it everywhere in Leamington.
I don't think it's a risk.
It's, so, it's hyperbole, I'm just, it's excessive, I understand, but.
I understand what you're talking about, but just because you moved here for peace and quiet, I mean.
No, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. You get what I'm saying, right?
That's why we have a zoning ordinance, that's why we have conditional use permits. And quite frankly, I don't know how many times the select one have issued an event permit, my guess is once, which is what brought this all on, was the event down at the airport.
That was to my point, because it doesn't happen very often.
It doesn't, and now that you've brought up the fishing derby, that definitely has to be addressed, there's no doubt about it. But we don't have monthly events. We have, like, Cornish has a food truck event at the playgrounds. You know, those don't disrupt a community, they enhance a community, as long as there are conditions put on them. And I think that's what this is attempting to do. We're not out to harass, but we are out to address like your issue with the bond, that we didn't know was such an issue. I mean, it needs to, you know, and we are a growing town, and it's, everything, like this has to go before the town meeting in March as a referendum vote. And it could be that towns, there's a lot of local people who don't like the planning board, and they don't want to have anything to do with whatever the planning board does. And if enough of them come out, it gets voted down. So you just, I mean, you know, that's the history of local town meeting form of government, that's the way it functions.
Yeah, and I'm just, I was just coming up to say that I do appreciate that there's multiple steps. I just wanted to share some opposition, that's all.
What would you do to bring the fishing derby down to what you would be acceptable for you? I mean.
Well, first off, having a 3:00 AM start on an event is crazy.
Right.
So I'd start there. And second.
Fireworks at 3:00.
Yeah, secondly, I think this bond issue, or having a bond or some sort of requirement for people to clean up, that's an excellent step as well, because the refuse that was on that lake was absurd.
This is a personal opinion right now. That is run by the Standish fishing.
Fishing game.
Fishing game. They would never be allowed to do that in Standish. And unfortunately, and I am speaking my personal opinion now, Leamington has had lax interpretation because of some previous code enforcement offices. They have had some perhaps reputational concerns, because the instance that you might not know about, but of a junkyard, and one of the people that was supporting the person with this horrible mess was from Standish. And I saw him individually, because he got very angry at me and wouldn't speak to me, which I think is stupid, if you can't separate public responsibility from private, you know, not relationships, but friendships or whatever. And he said to me, we never would have let that happen in Standish. So there are some people that think that this town will allow anything to happen, and we're trying to control that to the best that we can. That's what a planning board is responsible for in my opinion.
Yeah, and I agree with you, you know, the heartburn that I have with it is that it's an outside entity coming to our town, right? And at the end of the day, it's not their backyard, it's not their problem, so they come here.
That's why we need this to have them.
Correct. So, yeah, I personally agree with you as well, so.
All right, now, anything else on, oh, yes, Emo, I'm sorry, thanks.
Just a couple of things, and.
This is Emo speaking, just.
Donna knows who I am. I think everybody does, but.
You mean she can not recognize your voice?
Back to whether the select board needs to issue a permit as well or not, just some background on that. When it was implemented, the point of getting the permit through the select board was to make sure that, like food trucks, things like that, if they came to town, that they had the right insurances and licenses and things like that. So it almost seems redundant, if you're going to have the select board still do that, if they're coming to get a conditional use permit, where I would think you would do that as part of the conditions. The only exception to that now is the requirement of the performance bond. So I guess it depends when you, or how you want to implement that. The board has to set that performance bond.
The select board does.
Correct. So is that, would that become the point of going to them for the permit, so that they could ensure that that performance bond was committed, I guess?
Right now, the only instances that come immediately to my mind, that this board recommends that the select board establish a performance bond is with subdivisions, you know, for.
Right, but how do you?
But what, I think what I'm, sort of, is sort of whirling around in the back of my mind right now, is that this is a sort of a learning process, and I personally think, let's put this forward, and hopefully it gets voted in, and let's see what happens for a year, that we can always, and we do make amendments to the ordinance. And if it turns out that is, it is a complicated, which I find it hard to believe that it would be, but if there is duplicity even, hey.
Yeah, I'm just pointing it out. But also, the more difficult you make it for residents to do something, the less likely you are to get it to pass. So like, I think we're all thinking of Kyle being an outsider and holding an event, that's really what this comes down to.
Right.
And ensuring that it remains semi-peaceful for the community, all of which I understand. But if you make it difficult for the residents themselves on their own property to have an event, they're probably not going to vote it through.
Well, you know, that was the point of limiting for the numbers. Nobody, you know, I might have my 90th birthday party at my house, if 250 people show, I will not invite David.
What about me?
I don't, I don't want to go get a permit for it.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, no, and really what this comes down to.
It's not meant for that kind of thing to happen.
Right.
If you're going to have your grandson's wedding at your house, you shouldn't have to even think about coming.
Right, I mean, essentially, you could title it ordinance for Leamington Harmon Airport, but besides that, and to go off on the tangent we've been running down with the ice derby, I'm curious, the enforcement mechanism on the water. Does the town have jurisdiction over the water, or is that, I'm not sure who owns the water, right, to enforce it?
They obviously do have jurisdiction over that.
Right, so.
They're not doing anything.
But will they enforce town ordinance anyway?
Well, I think the thing we need to do is, in going forward with this, is see what other towns that have lakes and ponds.
Right.
Get directly in touch with the State Department, that, you know, the fishing game or whatever they're calling it.
I'm just thinking, if we have an ordinance, we already know the wardens are down there anyway.
But if they send, if they send one person for 500 people, he may as well stay home and take an air.
Right, but I'm just not sure how it's going to get enforced, is my point.
That is the major. Past town property get there.
That is the problem with anything, even whether it's this, or if it's a Dollar General, or if it's a junkyard, or if it's the people who put six, 67 unlicensed cars.
Right, but from a town standpoint, you can at least put a lien on their property if you have a cost affected to something, right? And then outside of that, going, sticking with the derby, the derby starts at 5:00 and it goes for the day, like till 3:00 o'clock or so. However, people come in on their own with their ice shacks, and they do whatever they do on the ice.
Yep.
But they don't necessarily just do that the night before the derby, they could do that all winter long. But this would only require them to clean up after themselves if it was a mass gathering.
If this was a derby, if it was a spot.
But I think you find the Standish fishing game would say, well, that's not our problem, because that happens before our derby starts. Their permit would be from the day that it starts and goes, the duration until it ends, but the people come in before that. So I'm not sure that it would even do any good anyway.
I mean, people go down there and, from locally, go down there, wait for the derby to start, and.
Right.
The ones that's causing most of the trouble.
People sell their shacks to them, which.
Right. But, just things to think about.
Yep, okay, that's an interesting point, thank you. Any more comments under this D?
Jake has one.
Jake, yes.
Several questions, I've had time back there, read some of those. So question.
Right now, we're only talking about section D, requirements for conditional use permit gathering.
I know, but can I go backwards for a minute? Under section, I guess what we're calling C, on the definitions, when you're talking about, you know, the number of participants for one hour or more, do all those participants have to be there at the same time?
No, I mean, no. I mean, if you're going to have a birthday party, they're going to come wandering in, they want to be there for the music and for the blowing out and the giving of the presents and whatnot. I mean, you can extrapolate this out to making you want to rip it up and throw it away, say, who cares what happens? But that is the minutia that is difficult to deal with.
Oh, I know.
And you can't, there are some things that you can't control. I mean, we all have to accept that.
And.
And because we have no real, other than Craig, real enforcement, for lack of a constable or whatever, things are going to happen.
And what led me to that thought process was the discussion about making it for any event, and I'm concerned at what that might lead to. For example, if I had a yard sale.
See, that's what I call the minutia.
But that's the thing, I mean, I don't know.
I know, but you can extrapolate like that, and you can make it so ridiculous, and my, I'm speaking in my terms now, that it would be unenforceable. And I wouldn't blame the town for voting it down if they thought.
They would vote it down.
If they thought they couldn't have a yard sale, or if they thought they couldn't have a birthday party or a wedding. That is not the intent of this ordinance.
Right.
Now, if you've got somebody who wants to be nasty, because their neighbors are holding their grandson's wedding in their property, and they don't happen to like that neighbor, this doesn't apply to that, that they can, they'll have to resolve that themselves.
Right.
And it doesn't, so I guess I would ask that we not talk about a yard sale, because it doesn't apply to a yard sale.
Right. And I guess I was just sort of confirming that there's a reason that it's at 300, is because you don't want to get into them.
We don't want to infringe on people doing their.
It wouldn't get voted in.
Right.
It wouldn't get voted in.
So then, the other question I had, and it came up in some of the discussion, I think maybe Judy asked, is if you have an event center, you don't need a conditional use permit for every mass gathering that's there?
We, when we did the wedding over on Allen Hill Road, they presented as a business, and their barn was their facility for holding their events. They were event planners, I think, is that what they're called, event planners? And so whenever they did hold a wedding there, or an anniversary party or whatever, they already, from their original conditional use permit, they had all the conditions they had to meet. So in every wedding, and every anniversary party or whatever they held there, they had to meet all those criteria. Now, in, when you have an event like the one that took place at the Leamington Harmon Airport, there was no one facility, this is an outdoor major event. And so we didn't have a house, or a building, or a barn, or a structure to tie to it. That's why in something like that, they would come back each time. This is just me speaking, the board may say she doesn't know what she's talking about.
Oh, I agree.
That I don't.
I agree.
He also, I agree with him, I don't sometimes. So this is for that kind of, of an event, yes. If you want to hold five concerts a year, you come in for five conditional use permits. But if you're a business, and your business is event planning, and you have a barn or your house or whatever, it's like an Airbnb. You don't have them, every time they have somebody come in and rent, they don't have to come and get a permit. They are given a conditional use permit with all the criteria they have to meet, and, you know, that's the way it goes.
Well, I mean, yeah.
What?
I mean, we hit on the food truck event a little bit too. So we don't need a conditional use permit for mass gathering for that event?
We have not done that in the past, conditional use permit for food trucks. The town, doesn't the town hold a food truck event here?
No, it's at a personal property.
At a personal house.
Oh, I know where that, what you're talking about. But didn't the town have a food truck thing, or don't they have food trucks at 4th of July or something like that?
Yeah, they have, they have a few down there, but.
I think that one of the things that will be clarified, in using the food truck as an example, is this does not attract anywhere near 250 or 300 people. And it may be that the lawyer will tell us that anybody who does that has to, I don't have an absolute answer for that yet. But my thought, my personal thought is, that they would not need the conditional use permit, because they are on a private property, and they're under the 300 people if this is passed requirement.
I guess there should be some clarification then, on the, I guess it's under the applicability, that, for example, the wedding venue that we were talking about, if they already have a conditional use permit for that property.
Right.
That maybe they don't need to come in for this. This doesn't say that, it just says it's just 300 people for an hour or more. So that could be any event at any property, that's 300 people for an hour or more, is the way this reads. It doesn't say, unless you already have a conditional use permit, or unless you have an event center, or.
But that's the difference between having a business and having a one-time event.
Oh, this was very much the concert planner's business.
Was. It was a, it was a one-time event, and every time he had it, if he's going to have three more or 10 more, all those times he would have to come for a conditional use permit.
Unless he gets a conditional use permit to make the airport a concert venue?
No, he, that's, he does, he's not asking for that, and he hasn't asked for that.
But if he does, that would exempt him from.
If he does, then we have to address that issue.
Okay.
Highly unlikely that he will, if he or anyone else wanted to hold that kind of a concert, they don't have a big enough facility over there to do it, for one thing.
Well, certainly, if I was going to do, if I was going to do that concert that he did, if I was planning three of those a year, I'll come in for one conditional use permit for the airport.
No.
To get it, so I don't have to get one every time.
No, no. We would not give him that. We would say to him, because you don't have a facility, structure, building, that you're holding this in, you have to come in every time for a conditional use permit.
So it's a structure that is the.
Well, you know.
And he's got structures there, I mean, I don't, I mean, I.
The point, you know, the point being, he had, how many, 2,000 people there?
I have no idea.
3,000.
Whatever it was. It ran very well, in my opinion. It ran very well, in my opinion.
Yeah.
If he were going to hold another one, I don't care if he's got three barns there or 42 hangars. They're not big enough to hold all those people. So, he has to come in every time, whoever it is, for a conditional use permit. But, if, using him as an example, he has an application here right now for reverting to storage in a golf thing. That requires a conditional use permit. He's changing the use of that structure. Now, whether he agrees with us or not, that's another issue, but.
Right.
So, am I making my differentiation clear or not?
No. I'm sorry, but i- if he wanted to make that a concert venue and came in for a conditional use permit to make the airport, shut the airport down, make it a concert venue. He gets an outdoor. Well, I, I mean, I understand, okay, let's take the airport out of it, that, you know. The machine shop down here wants to make it an outdoor concert venue. And he gets a conditional use permit to do that. Does that exempt him from coming in every concert for this?
Does he have a facility big enough to hold 2,000 people?
He's got a field, it's an outdoor concert, I mean, I don't know.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's an outdoor facility, yes, you gotta come in every time.
He still has to go back to the zoning laws.
Right.
If he doesn't have the parking, if he has parking for 100 people, I'll tell him he's gonna get in there.
But, I mean, there's nothing in here saying it's for outdoor mass gatherings.
All right, then we'll put the word outdoor then.
I mean.
I mean, I don't know how else to accommodate what you're saying. We can get so nitpicky that, like Darrell says, this isn't gonna go anywhere. The point, the major point of this ordinance, which seven, at least other towns around us and more than that, I'm sure, is to control large mass gatherings. Now, if we didn't have minor gathering in here, you know, we wouldn't be talking about weddings and yard sales and, and food trucks. We'd only be talking about big, we're not going to, we don't have a stage like they have in Westbrook where they have these massive concerts. So, it's outdoor events of, you know, if somebody, and the other thing you could say, I know.
I'm, I'm sorry, Joyce, but the stage in Westbrook was the same thing he set up down here for a weekend.
Don't they have a permanent thing there, don't they?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've never been there. I guess I'm pretty limited in my.
No, it's gone, I think it, they'll move it, they move it in the winter, I think, or something. That's, and I, again, I, I'm just, I didn't have a problem with what was going on down there. I don't have a problem if somebody wants to run a concert, whatever. But I think that this needs to be clearer, that like, is it just for outdoor gatherings? Is it, except if you've got a conditional use permit already for a venue for doing this?
That will be a question that would be properly addressed to the attorney and see if we need to put that kind of.
It just seems like it needs to be more, the applicability, I guess, needs to be a little bit more specific about, like, who really needs one and who doesn't? And then, yeah, I guess.
When someone comes for these permits, they're gonna meet all the zoning standards, which means a lot of them couldn't even do it because they wouldn't have the parking. So, I mean, there's a lot of property that's not gonna be able to support any of it.
And that could be one of the things about the fishing derby. I don't know where these people park.
There's a parking lot.
Yeah, could you get us, please?
Zach Dinsmore again. So, when it comes to the fishing derby, a lot of the parking can take place over at the, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, Moyo Medemo.
Moy Medao.
Moy Medao, the, the parking, they park there, they access the lake through there. But, some of the individuals for this event don't wanna park there. So, what they do is they come down, we'll use July Street, for example, and they park along the private road. And then they go down through the camps that are uninhabited.
That's how, that, that is something that we can limit.
Yeah, so, a- and that's a, that's another piece of the puzzle to this, you know, event. And, so, that just answers that question, you, you brought that up, so.
Wouldn't you say the majority of the people that go to that fishing derby actually ride in there? Cause they go by my house, I'll tell you.
When you say ride in there, you mean on a snowmobile?
No, it's come over there.
No, no.
Not majority, many.
Many, but not.
Yeah, they come i- in many forms, many ways. Some, I, I, I work in Westbrook and I have people who live in Westbrook that come to this event and they don't have a dime in, in Leamington, they don't care. And, you know, when I bring this up at work, they just laugh at me because they're like, whatever, we're gonna come there and we're gonna do what we want.
Well, that's why we're gonna address it.
Right. So, I was just answering a question, so.
I appreciate that, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on now. To conditional use permit, event permit. In reviewing the event, conditional use permit and event permit applications, the planning board and the select board shall determine whether the applications meet all the following standards. Safety and access, the applicant shall ensure convenient and safe access for ingress and egress of pedestrian and vehicular traffic and that traffic safety be maintained on streets serving the event. Site. The outdoor event assembly area will be well-drained and so arranged to provide sufficient space for attendees, vehicles, sanitary facilities, and the pertinent equipment. Two, trees underbrush, large rocks, and other natural features will be left intact and undisturbed whenever possible and the natural vegetative cover shall be retained, protected, and maintained so as to facilitate the drainage, prevent erosion, and preserve any scenic attributes. Three, the site shall be maintained free from the accumulation of refuse and from health and safety hazards constituting a nuisance. Four, the assembly area shall be adequately lit, but lighting shall not unreasonably reflect beyond the assembly area boundaries unless adjacent properties are uninhibited. Five, the permittees shall be responsible for the posting of no parking signs on streets serving the area as dictated by the planning board and in accordance with directions from the fire chief. So, let's just talk about that section now. Any concerns or comments about that section?
Can we take that dictated out, put something more.
Dennis.
Just, just a question, um, the part about not moving rocks and some, some things like that, how did that get in there? I mean, I, I.
Well, you know what, this, this is a, an amalgamation of the seven, well, I didn't use Scarborough's because they're a city and we're such a small town. But, some of this came from Standish, some of it came from Freiberg, that's another one, some of it came from Hollis.
I just didn't know how it relates, I mean, it's, it's just.
So, I, I put it in there because it was in another town's mass gathering ordinance. And I didn't know if it would cover certain aspects of people going in and cutting down trees.
Right, it might, I just wasn't curious how it, how it related to mass gatherings, that's all.
Yeah, it was just, you know, that type of thing. Sort of a covering your posterior. Yes, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie Loflin. Joyce, in terms of just this whole section here being organized, up at the top of this page, number four, the standards listed.
That's under the previous section.
I'm trying to, just if you can let me finish.
Sure.
Because what you're doing, the previous section, okay, you sort of identified now as D, requirement of a conditional use permit.
Right.
So, number four of that permitting procedure, you have the standards listed below and the relevant conditions shall be followed. Okay, maybe, but then you're going.
There probably should be a pair, oh, wait a minute.
Just bear with me for a sec. This next section that you've just taken on is important and it has to do with standards. Standards, okay? Just like in a lot of the zoning ordinance, standards are important. And, we've just gone through two of them. So, they need to be organized as standards underneath that heading, in, in my opinion. I think at least we could show that to the attorney. We could show that we've, we've got a handle on the organization of some of our, our topics here. So, you know what I'm saying, these are standards. Safety and access site, I'll stop so you can read them, but medical, noise, hours, sanitation. You're gonna go right down over to the next page, I think the last one might be the state license. So, I'm just suggesting, and if, if number four up at the top there needs to be one of the items.
We can take out the fourth.
I would take it out, yeah. And then, um, start with in reviewing.
Yep.
Okay, and, and as you see, if following standards, colon there. Uh, so that's when you'd start your.
I gotcha.
Nine ones, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. All right, any comments on one through five under site? Yes. Jake, Jason.
I just have one. Jason, again, on five, the no parking signs.
Yeah, I was gonna question.
Yeah, Route 25, Route, what, 7, 117, and 11, that we don't have jurisdiction over, so. Other than that, that's a DOT, that's why Jettie can't put up signs. Yep. So, as long as it's, if it's a town road, then we can, we can depict that, but other than that, it's a DOT thing.
So, should it say on town streets?
Yeah.
Excluding state roads?
Yep.
Well, you could put no parking signs up in front of your frontage of your house. State allows you to do that.
If you're on 117?
I'm on 11 and I have them in front of my house.
Oh, oh.
Were you talking directly to me, I, you looked at me.
No, I was just reading what he said about parking.
You can't put no parking signs up in front of your own house on, oh my god, right?
No.
Could you make that clear for the people in some.
We know, yeah, yeah.
Okay, for, on any DOT road, state road, Route 25.
I got it.
You can't, you can't, the municipality, we, the municipality can't make somebody put up a no parking sign. It's against the law. The only ones that can do that is the DOT. If the DOT says it's okay and you get permission from them, it's great, but from us, no.
Right, I understand that, yes.
But as a homeowner, you can put up no parking signs in front of your house. I have them in front of mine, they've been there 15 years.
Okay, anything, any other comments on one to five, Jake?
Legally.
Well, the DOT's never told me to take them down and they ride by there all the time.
If they're on your property, you probably put up whatever sign you want. As long as you got a permit from code enforcement. Section number two.
Trees and underbrush?
Yeah, there's a lot in there, and I, I think we might need to be more vague, or I guess I would recommend.
How about if we just remove it?
I would just suggest, yeah, whatever you wanna do, but I would just say more vague because the natural vegetative color shall be retained. I think we're gonna be planting people's lawns or, I'm just worried we are.
The minutia of that, it's not worth it.
Zach Dinsmore again. I, I'd like to speak to not removing that because all I can think of is, again, sorry for the pronunciation, Moy Medemo?
Moy Medao.
I'll get it before we're done here.
Well, actually, the correct pronunc- pronunciation is Moy Medao.
Moy Medao, okay. Let's say, let's say parking's getting a little tight there, somebody's got a trailer for their sleds and their, their shacks. Oh, well, I'm just gonna back this in over the trees and shrubs and, you know, small trees and shrubs that are here, or something like that. They set up a stage also on the beach for weigh-ins and stuff during this event. What's, you know, if we have this in there, it'll keep, keep them from putting it over natural vegetation that's on the edge of the lake and stuff like that. So, I, I, I do see a use for this language. Maybe we adjust the, the wording of it, but to remove it completely would allow people to, in mass gatherings, you know, back over vegetation that's, you know, vital to the area.
What if we started with natural features? Okay, got rid of trees, underbrush, large oxen. It then says, natural features will be left intact and undisturbed whenever possible. I think that makes good sense. And, natural blah, 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 the rest, I think is okay. I don't, but, I don't know about the scenic attributes, but we could get rid of the scenic attributes, I think. But I, I think to do natural features right up through to prevent erosion would be good.
And the other thing is too, the other thing is too, that the code enforcement officer does his post 48-hour inspection. And if there are trees that are plowed down, mowed down, everything, that would be part, the restoration of that would be part of the performance bar.
Sure, and having the language in here would let the, the event coordinator or whoever know that this is something that's gonna be looked at. I mean, yeah, so, there, there, I think there needs to be some sort of language to it.
So, I just, I just remove my, remove it and put my amend in.
I'm just asking.
Bonnie, go ahead.
At the public hearing also, I don't think it will hurt, and I think it might help to keep the rest of the sentence exactly as it is.
The preserve.
Facilitate drainage, prevent erosion, and preserve. We wanna preserve the scenic attributes in our town. And the natural resources and good things in our town.
Yeah, it was a lot in that sentence, and so I think taking it out a little bit was good, but I think you're right, we can leave the scenic attributes.
I go with that.
It's all good.
Thank you.
Plant a few flowers, make it pretty.
In February.
Yep.
Trees come down in the shoreline area, I'm sure all of you have, you know this, and it's really hard to put them back. And it is against the shoreline rules. So, keep the rest of it in.
To the next section? Okay, we're on to, uh.
I'm just wondering what's in there now.
What's in what?
Well, when I first came up, it all went away, and I was just simply saying that we don't need to plant people's lawns back after they've had an event. The first sentence?
We're starting with the word natural, Jake. We're starting with the word natural. We're getting rid of that first six words.
So, you're leaving the natural vegetative cover shall be retained?
Natural features will be left intact and undisturbed whenever possible.
And the natural vegetative.
Natural vegetative cover shall be retained, protected.
It's the natural vegetative cover that I have.
Okay.
Issue with, because if it's a lawn.
Yeah.
And it gets destroyed because there's too many people on it.
Natural, a lawn.
Well, if somebody is going to hold a party at their house and, and their guests clomp up their lawn, that's not our problem. But if it's your, no, it's not our problem.
Unless we got a bond that says we're gonna protect private property.
We're protecting Mamadale.
Well, that's, that's public property, so I think that should stay.
Let's move on to medical, unless there are some other comment. Emergency medical services shall be provided. The Leamington Fire Chief shall receive a copy of the application for the mass gathering, review the applicant's proposed staffing and equipment to be provided for the number of attendees, and make any recommended changes felt necessary. The Leamington Fire Department will be on call if further assistance is required. Any comments?
Yes, um, I think we need to put a timing in for when he'll receive the application, is it at the same time?
He will get it when we do.
When we do, okay. Cause otherwise it could go later.
Yeah, no, no, he gets them, just like now. Yeah. He gets them when we do, yes, Jake.
Maybe the chief can shed some light on this, but the Leamington Fire Department will be on call if further assistance is required? Isn't that always the case?
They, I mean, they are, they were for this last event.
I mean, if we.
Do you wanna take that out?
I guess, I guess the question I have is that if we can't fill a shift for whatever reason, does this hold us to anything that shouldn't be?
I'll let Emo answer that.
Well, honestly, that was, when I read that at first, that was my concern. If, if we're guaranteeing a service that we can't necessarily guarantee, I'm not sure that it does that.
You ought to take that sentence out?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I don't know that it's necessary to have in there and it relieves, relieves the town of any liability.
Yep, that's a good point, thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I was asked earlier, when it says emergency services shall be provided, I was asked how, so.
Say that one again?
The first sentence. Just to answer the how part, is this contract services that anybody can contract for events like that? So, like northeast ambulance companies like that provide those services for a fee. And then, I don't know if it ever becomes a thing, but if an event goes on and they want the town service to cover that, then we would have to have a fee schedule and a process.
You would have a fee schedule, yeah. It's not up to us to set your fee schedule.
Yeah.
So, if you, if you feel that you need one, then I definitely would put one in.
Why would, why would we wanna do that?
No, I'm not saying we would, and, and I, at first, I was thinking that this was reading that, that that might be part of it, but I don't think it, it does that in any way, it doesn't commit us to, to doing that, so.
It's not meant to, at all.
Yeah, okay.
We still would send a rescue there, right, if there was a problem, that's part of it, right?
Well, if, if they have a contract service, if they have their own medical service there, then we wouldn't have to because they would be the transporting service. Question comes in, is if there is. Question comes in, is if there is an incident there, and that ambulance transports, they would probably call us to do that, so they could keep their medical service on scene, and then that could be burdensome on our service, if you're talking to, you know, that concert over there. Say there's a, a big fight over there, it only takes one fight to commit four or five ambulances, you know, so.
We'd call in other towns like we do in any other situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Jack, you had a...
My point is regarding this one just discussed, I'm sorry, my point is regarding this one.
I think you could say in the mic who you are, just for the second.
Sorry?
Say who you are in the...
Oh, Jack Partridge again, at thirteen Evergreen, yes. Regarding this numbers of people that determine how many of these services are required, and later in this document, we talk about porta-potties, and you need to know in advance how many people you have are coming, will determine...
Well, I think that plus his numbers in the porta-potty situation.
Right, these numbers are projections at first, so you know how many to order, but in the last case of the last event, it changed by a factor of three. So you, you predict a thousand customers, participants, whatever, and three thousands were spoken of after the event, whether it was hyperbole or truth, I don't know, but that's, it's a large effect on availability or the requirement for EMS and/or porta-potties, if you want to use that one as well. So should these figures, these projections be upgraded at about event starting time, just so, so that the important people know that the number has gone three times as high?
Are they all there at once?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
They were.
I think so, well, I don't, I can't say how late they stayed, I mean...
They were in and out.
Yeah, some people did leave early.
Some came just for one concert, some came for a couple.
A particular favorite band.
Correct.
Okay, so we can't say that, yeah, yeah.
It might have averaged fifteen hundred, probably didn't average three thousand, that was probably the total that came throughout the whole thing.
So you could try, give it a try and see how it works out, if this is an ongoing problem, you could adjust the ordinance.
That's what this is for, so that we kind of get a feel for, does this work, or do we have to make changes?
I see, yeah, yeah. It's just a matter of when some, something is triple, that vastly changes things.
That's a big difference, absolutely.
But if they go away, have, have the people, because they didn't stay there, they start arriving at, say, 2:00 PM-ish, and the last drag was left around, including crew, were about 10:00 PM, not noise, noise start ended around 9:30 or nine o'clock or so. So, okay.
Anything else on the medical?
All right, just to follow up on that, that first sentence on the medical, you may just add, where it says, "Will, shall be provided," you might add "by permitting."
Okay.
Just to make it clear that the burden's on them, not, not assumed that it's provided by us.
By us, right.
No, I don't know that it should be, should it be the, you know, the person named in the application, okay. Yes, Bonnie, you have?
Bonnie Loughlin, again, I'm confused about how you left it with Emo before what he just said, for the rest of the paragraph there. I'm especially worried about how the town is going to be obligated for any fire. It starts talking about the fire chief and then the fire department, so there's no other reference that I can see offhand about help with a fire, so...
I mean, I think a fire, correct me if I'm wrong, Emo, if there's a fire there, it's handled by you, and then if you need to call in Standish or Buxton or Hollis or whatever, you do that, it's like any other situation with a fire, correct?
Well, I'm curious about that, I guess you looked at seven towns or however many, we're trying to have them take responsibility and plan ahead for certain things. Do we, if, fire's a big thing, and I'm just curious about whether we are asking them to be, have fire help available, or be sure they have extinguishers or something at their event.
This is on the medical.
Well, I hear you, so, but because of, the fire chief is mentioned and the fire department is mentioned, it brings, it start, and you just answered that it, if there were a fire...
We'd respond to any fire, correct? Let Emo answer that.
Okay, I'm trying to just make sure the town...
Isn't responsible.
Exactly.
Exactly.
That's why we're taking that last sentence out.
I got to there, Bonnie. So if there's a fire down there, you would respond like, any, under, any normal, out of fire...
Yeah, so, a couple things to that, if you do leave, I think you did say that you're going to take that last sentence out, but if you want to clarify where, anywhere it refers to the Leamington Fire Department, you could go Leamington Fire EMS Department, where we are combined, that might create confusion for those who don't know that.
Well, we took that out, but...
Correct, I'm just saying if it's listed anywhere else, or...
No, I don't, no, no, we just refer to you, the fire chief.
Okay. And then as, as far as fires, which I don't think you really refer to in here, it's just the medical, but you can require them to have their own fire brigade, or you can require them to contract us, but, correct.
So the state of Leamington has no liability to show up for a fire if there's a fire down there?
Well, if there were a fire, they, they would call and we would respond like we always do, but we have no more added responsibility to be there.
But I mean, if it was a fire that was caused by negligence, you would have to be able to go for the services anyway, right, whereas, so it's...
Okay, all righty, we're moving on to noise and hours. The noise levels at the property line of a butter shall not exceed seventy decibels unless the mass gathering is remotely located and the surrounding properties are uninhabited. Any comment on noise and hours?
On this, how did we come up with the seventy when they...
Uh, it was taken from another town, and I believe Jason had some equipment there, and it never got above that, I believe.
That was my question, that was Judy Fullerton again, is who's monitoring that?
I believe crushes can be, what, eighty-five, right?
What, say what again? Do we have equipment to test that, then?
We have one discussion that returns.
This is about noise.
And Jason just answered my question, because I was wondering if this was enforceable or not, and we do have equipment to test that, so we're good.
And so, to Vera, there is equipment.
Yes.
I had equipment there, but I'm not a professional in that situation, once again. The number came from our current ordinance that's on the books, seventy. State of Maine allows ninety-five decibels for cars, so, just something to think about.
Ninety-five for cars?
But yeah, I mean, yeah, ninety-five decibels for car exhaust, so a car driving down the road can be louder than this concert, but I don't, that's not what I'm here. It is enforceable, but I would, it's going to be enforceable by a professional company, if somebody wants to hire a company to do so, but we're not, I don't believe the town should be obligated to follow suit. With, if it's loud, then they need to prove that it's loud. That's, right, yeah, so, I just wanted to really specify that, I think the burden is going to be on the, either the person making the complaint, because it can get tied up with the whole decibel.
Bonnie, oh, I'm sorry, no, 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 I, I...
Zach Dinsmore, again, so, to his point, let's say there is an event going on, right, because we're talking about that, so, and the noise level is unacceptable, and we know it's over seventy, right, because it's, I'm pretty sure fireworks at three AM constitutes a little loud. Who are we supposed to call in that moment to get that reading? Because if, if we're depending on a violation of this ordinance for noise to be based on a reading, who...
Well, that's time, though, because that's past ten PM.
Well, during, what does it say? It says, it says this at any point in time, the noise level, right?
It does say that it has to, oh, no, after eventual continuing beyond ten PM.
Yes.
But, no, I, I hear what you're saying, who, who do you call if the noise is...
Right, because...
I don't want to say Craig, we're not going to give that with his...
State police, he may.
Yeah.
Are they, well, okay, so, yeah, we call state police, are they, are they running around with, with the, the equipment needed to measure noise, or do they just make a gut judgment?
They do that one, right, Jason? If they measure an exhaust with ninety-five decibels, they must have one.
Yeah, but it's not maybe a car, it'd probably be a car, yeah, it's going to be hard to find.
Well, should we have it in there if we can't enforce it?
That was basically the question.
Well, you, you got to have something.
Yeah, but we've still, we've got...
Is that just raising people to setting the firecrackers off, because, you know, I hear them at my house all the time.
If you dig into your zoning ordinance, it, it specifies that it's going to be at the boundaries of a butter's land, so many height, four feet, I mean, it gets into technicalities, and that's why I mentioned then a company. Now, here we are again, you want to hire a company and jack that to the fee to say, hey, listen, we're going to test it, I mean, common sense would be if it's blaring at a hundred and ten, I would be with you. I told Mr. Starkweather right at the beginning, I said, if this thing is over, overly loud, and I told in front of you guys too, I said, I will tell you to turn it down, but, I mean, that, I mean, it...
They're not going to, he's not going to call you at three o'clock in the morning.
Right, no, 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 I, I don't know how, I don't know how we're going to...
See, you're saying it's always an issue, and I think the key to your situation is the hours that are permitted for this to take place.
So, yeah, that was my next thing, you, you read out loud the first part of the noise and hours, you didn't read the bottom part, can I speak to the hours, because I have a concern with how that's worded?
Yes, yes.
So, "No large outdoor event shall continue beyond ten PM," I believe there needs to be a start time as well, there needs, right, because...
I was thinking that, too.
They stop, let's say they stop at ten, but, you know, they reconvene at two in the morning, or three in the morning, you know, and furthermore, just as cleanup, it says no large outdoor event, for continuity's sake, we're using the term under definitions of minor and major gathering, right? Yeah, minor mass gatherings, major mass gatherings, we do not define what a large outdoor event is, so I think we need to change...
It's a mass gathering, it, it all relates to the number of people that are there.
You should probably say...
The wording needs to be correct, so...
No minor or major mass.
Yeah, I, I deal with contracts on a daily, so...
Where, where do you want to...
So right here, where it says, uh, no large, it should say no minor or major mass.
Because nowhere, nowhere within this definition, or within this ordinance, do we describe what a large outdoor event is, we describe what a minor and a mass gathering.
Gotcha.
And we could say start before eight?
Yeah, I, I think...
And no, and not, and, and beyond ten, that it won't start before eight AM and go beyond ten o'clock PM?
Yeah, I mean, that...
But it's tough for a fishing derby, you say.
I don't care.
I know, well, that's why I'm asking, I don't know, seven?
Yeah, sure, and again, Standish, Standish fishing game, I don't, I don't really care about Standish fishing game, if it was a Leamington fishing game, then I would, I would have more care, but again, these are outsiders, so if we're going to talk about that event in particular, I don't really care that they're cut short three extra hours.
So like seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock?
Seven AM.
Well, I thought eight was nice. I mean, give me, give me a chance to have coffee.
From the perspective of fishing, which I know limited about... What?
Yes.
But not at three o'clock.
No.
No, goodness gracious, no.
But, and again, this, this can't just be about the fishing thing, it's got to be about everything, so, so a reasonable start time for anything, concerts or whatever, you know, that's important. So it's, it's good that we have some sort of language for start time as well.
It's seven AM.
Still going to be hard to stop four wheels and snowmobiles out there at three o'clock in the morning.
I don't, I don't care what wording you have in an ordinance, it's going to be hard to stop people who want to do what they want to do at the end of the day. People are ignorant, people are going to do what they want.
It's tough in the summer, too, unfortunately.
Yeah. So, that brings me back to where we started with this. We can't, we have no way of, right, accurately measuring the seventy decibels in the moment, right, in the middle, because we don't know who we got to call for that, and you said that you're not going to come out and you don't, right, there's, there's criteria for measuring this, so...
I think, I think the, you know, but when we said state police, that's probably the viable call to make.
Okay, so when it comes to any violation of this ordinance in the moment, right, because we said that you'd come out within forty-eight hours after the event's ended.
That's for cleanup.
Right, for cleanup, but for any violation of this ordinance in the moment, whether it be noise, whether it be whatever, who, who's our point of contact? Do we contact the state police, or do we contact somebody here within the town?
Well, the problem is if you have, the, the townhouse not open on weekends.
Sure.
So there's nobody here to contact.
Right.
I'd look for someone else's comment on that, I'm not quite sure what to say.
Yeah. And then, beyond that, let's say we call the state police, and do they have procedure, do they report everything back to the town for every call they get?
Jason, do they? Do the state, do the state police, do the state police report to you if they get a call in town about a major incident, or am I, no?
Okay, well, yeah, so, then this leads me to my next question. Are we, do we have a database that we're going to keep here of all people that have been permitted for a permit, so that if they are violators, let's say that they're violators of the ordinance, that can be taken into consideration if they file again? Because if they...
We do keep, in the planning board office, she has a book that everybody who gets a conditional use permit and what the, and the notice of decision that goes out that says what they have to do, so that is a record in town.
So that, right, that you gave one, and what they have to do, but are we keeping track of their violations? Because I think repeat offenders need to be...
I, I hear what you're saying, at this point, no, we do not have whether they have violated anything or not.
So, maybe, and I know we're jumping ahead here a little bit, but under the section of, uh... Event permit, decision, and conditions, the, under that section, maybe we need to have something that says that we're going to keep some of those records of, of violations, because...
The thing is, if it's the state police and they don't report, how do we, unless it's during the day, in the week, you know, when there's, when Craig is available, it's, it's...
Well, the...
Basically, what we know is if they cleaned up and get their money back, that's what we know.
Right, so I guess, so, do we need to, after the event, right, so they're, they're noisy, do we have to wait for the event to finish? We can call the state police or whatever, but then after the event's over, do we email the town, somebody hear you, and say?
Absolutely, you should.
But is all of that going to be kept under the file of that person that had the permit?
Well, my thought on that is that if the planning board office is keeping a record of all the conditional use permits that are issued, and they have the criteria listed, why wouldn't that be the appropriate place to, if there was a violation, to call the planning board secretary?
Okay.
Or, or whoever the chairperson is.
Should we have some sort of language somewhere in here that says for, with issues, you know, whatever, so and so is the contact point?
If, if I were to put my name, Madonna's name in, they'd be calling them in the...
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying your personal phone number, I'm saying like, you know...
Call the town, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it, you know, it, perhaps the, the key would be to have them call the town office, that means they, if they call before nine o'clock, they're not going to get anybody anyway, and then that, you know, that could be switched, that call could be switched to the planning board.
So let, let the ladies in the front office triage the phone call where it needs to go, if it's within operating hours.
If, yeah, because they answer the phone nine to five anyway, so, it's not as though they're going to get forty-two calls in the, you know...
Yeah, wow.
You're smiling, but...
Yeah.
I have a quick question, have you ever talked to the warden service about what goes on down there?
Yeah.
And they don't seem to care?
They never responded, they didn't, they, I told them everything that happened, and I never got a response back.
Are they down there at all, do you know if they're in there, or...
They, I was assured that there were two wardens that visited this past time, I don't know how long they were there, whether they were there the entirety of the event, or whether they stopped in, but I was assured that two of them had been on site.
I know some of the people involved in that, I'll, I'll do some research on it.
And like I said at the, at the top of this meeting, I, I do, you asked for the contact information that I had, and after this meeting, I can provide that to you.
That would be great, thank you. All right, anything else under noise and hours? Emo?
So, Bonnie gets up here all the time, relax. You guys are in your stipend tonight, so good work.
You guys are in your stipend tonight, so good work. There's so many things that I'm not going to remember. But fireworks, Leamington did not create its own ordinance for fireworks. So, fireworks fall under state law, which I think at that time would be a violation of state law. Noise ordinance, whatever we have, does it say over a period of time? Or is it just whenever it hits those decibels?
Yes, from 8:00 PM to 10:00.
But is it for, like, a duration? Does it have to be that many decibels for a certain period of time?
Oh, for...
Because I'm just thinking to Zach's point about the fireworks, you can't get somebody there in time.
Right.
So, you know, it may not be anything that qualifies as a violation of the decibels because it doesn't last long enough. But fireworks, because Leamington doesn't have anything, it falls to state law, which doesn't allow them at that time of night, anyway.
And that would go back to keeping a database, that if they violated that, then they would not be allowed to operate.
So, the other thing, thank you for reminding me, is I was going to ask, when we renew things like liquor licenses and things like that, not that we do, I guess, but part of the process, when somebody comes in to renew their license, is to investigate whether there were complaints or not. So, that's when the board should inquire with state police or law enforcement, whoever it is at the time, to see if there's any complaints. But also, there's a public hearing for that, for people who have complaints about that. So, next time somebody comes in for a conditional use permit for one of these events, that's important for those people to show up with their issues. If there's an issue during the event, and it's pre-business hours or on the weekends, nobody's going to get that. And how are you going to produce evidence if it's not, you know, you get a complaint, but it's hours old, maybe even days old, and it's he said, she said? So, your best avenue is to call law enforcement. The problem is, we don't contract with law enforcement. And I don't think you'll find that state police will enforce local ordinance if they're not contracted. So, it's all for naught.
But it would, but it would be possible to make a phone call to them to see...
If there were complaints. Correct. But, again, that's where the planning board needs to investigate when they go to go for their next permit.
But when it's a state law, they won't enforce it?
If it's a state law, yeah.
Then they will.
Yeah.
Okay.
But also, you know, either the planning board secretary or, you know, whoever Craig has a, it's very possible to call, someone here can be designated to call the state police right after the event and see if they hit it. That's the thing to do, not wait for six months, but call, if it happens on a Saturday, call them Monday morning, kind of thing.
A follow-up.
Well, they would have a record of any call anywhere.
Right. Okay. We're moving on now to... Oh, I'm sorry, Bonnie, yes.
It's past my dead time.
This issue about the noise, it seems that a lot of it is positioned for the benefit of a butter's. The noise levels at the property line of a butter shall not exceed 70 decibels. I'm happy that people know the zoning on that. And I think the rest of, I'd like to ask you, please, that the rest of that sentence just be struck out. Unless a mass gathering is remotely located, it's hard to imagine how a mass gathering of over 300 people could be remotely located and in an area that's uninhabited. If I can just finish, you know, where could this be? It could be...
Who knows?
But that's the point. We don't know that it's uninhabited either. We just don't know this. It could be that that's a day that you're with your family, Joyce, walking your dog through certain properties.
That's not, that's not what uninhabited means. It means if there are houses and people living in the area.
But why would we have a mass gathering there? It seems oddly at odds with what is in our zoning, anyway, about a limit of 70 decibels. It seems to conflict with that. Why not just end it at 70 decibels?
You're saying that the language is redundant?
I'm saying that it's hard to, it's hard to identify a place that would be uninhabited and remotely located, remotely located with 1,000 people there?
Well, yeah. You could have, you could have a, I don't know, maybe Leamington doesn't have any space, but there are obviously other towns that have areas that are uninhabited that will hold the people. And so, once again, like I said...
You may be right, but that would be other towns. And since we are even right now thinking, where could that be in our town? Let's just strike it. I think we're just...
Okay. Well, we can talk.
I think it's useless, and...
Okay.
That's my request.
Okay. We're moving on to sanitation. Yes. All right. If it's pertinent, yes.
No, I was just going to bring up the whole, about surrounding properties for uninhabited. Would that include our pits?
No, because there are, well, I mean, yeah, it could if they're on it, but...
Because we do have pits in town, so...
The pits, this is talking about surrounding properties that are uninhabited? And most of our pits are within reasonable distance of housing. So, they wouldn't be an uninhabited area.
Okay.
Everything's agreeing.
Yes.
I think it kind of makes sense to get rid of that last phrase, just because anything, we don't want it over 70, no matter where. We're bothering the birds and the fish.
Okay. It's just pertinent to this issue, yes, because we're getting late. We've got a lot to cover. And we're going to not have, from this point on, we're not going to get into the, if you don't mind me making this rule as chairperson, we're not going to get into the minutia of whether it's a yard sale or 3,000 people.
This seems like a personal attack.
So, what's your point here, Jake?
You don't want to have a noisy yard sale?
What's with the noise and...
So, just for reference, for anybody that was wondering what 70 decibels is, a gas-powered leaf blower runs at about 80 to 90 decibels.
Really?
So, just to give you some idea of what that is, I would recommend the noise section of this, just simply reference our existing ordinance, that it needs to follow that. If it's already 70 decibels, it already talks about the property boundaries.
It talks about rock crushes in a sand pit. In the ordinance, it talks about...
It's not just a blanket noise ordinance?
I believe it's in the sand pit.
Okay.
Okay. We're moving on to sanitation.
One more thing about the hours. So, there was a lot of discussion about, like, stuff that was happening early in the morning. I know, like, burn permits and things like that, you get there for a certain set of hours. So, can we have a mass gathering that's only between the hours of 8:00 and 10:00 or something?
From 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Yeah, but...
7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Did we have it?
We revised it.
We did put a 7:00 in there?
We did.
Well, no.
Would you like me to read you that sentence, or you all say?
Nope.
We need to have less gossip in the back and more paying attention to... Okay. Number one, under sanitation. The required sanitary facilities will be conveniently accessible and well-marked. Toilets shall be provided at a ratio of one for each 150 attendees at the mass gathering. The disposal and/or treatment of any excretion or liquid waste will be in a manner consistent with the requirements of the State Department of Human Services Division of Health and Engineering. Any comment? Hearing none. We move on to refuse disposal. Refuse shall be collected, stored, and transported in such a manner as to protect from odor, infestation of insects and/or rodents, and any other nuisance condition or conditions which are consistent with the health, safety, and welfare to the patrons of the event or the public. Two, the grounds and immediate surrounding properties shall be cleared of refuse within 48 hours following the event. Any comment? Dennis?
Well, refuse. Because they're going to be mostly private events, is there anything we should put in there about not using Leamington's waste facility?
Oh, the transfer station? Good point.
Right.
David Welbeck. For, just for contact information, when we get into health and sanitation, you could probably put down the health officer as your contact information person.
Who's that? Sarah, what's her name?
No. It would be Tabitha Mason, our new health officer, which she should be listed on the website for any health issues for sanitation.
Yeah, just list the health officer.
And her name is what? Tabitha Mason?
Not in the form, just health officer.
Health officer. Gotcha.
All right.
Sorry. I got the eyes. Yeah, we're just listed as health officer or town health officer. It's already listed on the website. She can work in conjunction with the CEO on these types of violations or assisting him with any type of human services stuff.
Okay.
How long have we had a health officer?
We've always had one. It's required. It's one of the required jobs at the town, so, but we just got a new one, so...
Who was the old?
It would be Sarah.
Sarah, that was.
Yep. Yep.
And then, before that, there was another lady who was very nice.
Before my time.
All right. Moving on to alcohol beverages.
On number two, I guess I would just suggest adding, "To be cleared of refuse that was a result of the event."
Well, of course it is. Everything is a result of the event.
Common sense isn't so common, right? If we don't add it, we don't add it. Just a suggestion.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Alcohol beverages. If alcohol beverages are sold at the mass gathering, sale of these beverages shall be limited so that public safety and order will not be impaired. The sale of alcoholic beverages shall be in compliance with the laws of the state of Maine. Dennis?
I think the part after the comma is un, not enforceable, but just doesn't make any sense. So, "Sale of these beverages shall be limited so the public safety," there's no way to do that. So, if you say that the, "Sold of the mass gathering, sale of alcoholic beverages shall be in compliance with the laws of the state of Maine," that's it.
You think that's...
You're not going to have somebody there saying, "You shouldn't have another one." You should, Craig, that's you, that would be your job.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, I got you. Yep, I got you. Makes sense.
Just to follow up with that, the servers are liable. So, if they're serving you, and Craig comes stumbling up drunk, and they keep feeding him, and you run somebody over, they're liable as well. But they're licensed. We, they license through the state. We, the board, get a copy to sign off on as well, so...
That's part of your event permit. Okay, great. Moving on to safety. I like that. Used you, not me. Number one, under safety. Where an electrical system is installed...
Just under the alcoholic beverages, is that last sentence kind of the only thing that we need?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
Under the alcoholic beverages, is that last sentence the only thing that we should have in there?
Sale of alcoholic beverages shall be in compliance with the laws of the state.
Well, you said about a comma. And it's like, if alcoholic beverages are sold, like, just the sale, because...
So, it's, the sale of alcoholic beverages shall be in compliance with the laws of the state of Maine.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Where an electrical system is installed, it shall be installed and maintained in accordance with the provisions of the applicable state standards and regulations in the town's electrical codes. Two, the grounds, building, and related facilities shall be maintained and used in a manner so as to prevent fire and in accordance with the applicable local fire prevention regulations. I have a question for air chief on that one. Three, internal and external traffic and security control shall meet requirements of the applicable state, county, and local law enforcement agencies. Emo. Under number two, is that worded properly to comply, like, with the applicable local fire prevention regulations?
Yeah, that'd be an enforcement of whatever we are in actual order.
Okay. Any comments on safety? Yes, Jack?
It's about item two?
Sure.
Regarding sentence two there, and this may very well be covered by ordinance, I have here, "Any event with pyrotechnics and/or open flames may need a person specifically nominated to observe and/or supervise." This is not to be the coordinator and/or eventee or nominee or, not Kyle. You can't have a manager running around trying to get everything going and watching every detail, whether there's a match too close to the box of fireworks. So, I think that they should name someone, nominate a particular name. It could be anyone who works...
You mean from them to, there wouldn't be anybody from the town?
From them. They may very well be a requirement by the fire department that something, it's such an important thing. One little spark can set that whole box off, and somebody else is doing something else. They're just busy doing other things. And I don't know if there's a rule to have that necessary anyways, so maybe I'm not speaking or something.
Pyrotechnics and the use of pyrotechnics is done by companies. They have to be state-certified. So, if they're going to do any type of pyrotechnics there, it's got a professional company coming in that's licensed to do so. And, yeah, the fire marshal's involved. So, it's out of our hands. It's on them.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Moving on to state license. Any applicant intending to attract the continued attendance of 2,000 or more people for 12 or more hours must obtain a state license pursuant to Title 22 MRSA, Section 1601 through 1607. That's a state law. That's why it's in there. Okay? Number two, applications that require a state license shall provide a copy of the approved state license to the planning board when presenting the application for a conditional use permit. Yes, Bonnie? Thank you, Dennis.
Bonnie Loughlin. I think when you look up Title 22, I just took a look at it. I think what this really wants to be, I think we want to say is a permit. I don't, I'm not quite sure why we're saying...
You mean it's not a state license, it's a state permit?
The thing about a license is, a license implies that it's for a longer period of time, and permit is what, everything you've been talking about tonight, it's for a specific event. So...
Well, every event would have to have this state license. If we can't call it a permit and then cite the state title and section, if, in fact, the state title in section says...
I'm sorry. We can't call it a permit. You've called it a license here. All I'm trying to say is, I don't think it's a license.
Well, yes, yes, it is, Bonnie.
Title 22 doesn't talk about a license. It talks about a permit. So, I don't know. Maybe the lawyer will figure it out.
Title 22?
Title 22.
In the, in the state.
That, yeah, the Section 1601. It doesn't talk about a license.
Okay. Okay, so change the...
So it should say state permit?
State permit?
I think what you're getting, it's a permit from the state, right? So whether it's, whether the term state permit works, I don't know exactly.
Okay.
But it seems that Title 22 talks about a permit.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, we're moving on to event permit decision and conditions for the select board. The select board may deny or grant the permit, and if granting the permit, impose such reasonable conditions on the issuance as would safeguard the public interest, including requiring any applicant. Two, post a performance bond in an amount estimated to be equal to the public cost. And Jason has already said he's spoken with the attorney about that. B, show security measures to be provided to enable the select board to determine the proposed level of security is sufficient. The cost of any town services, including overtime and benefit costs, are set by the town and shall be paid by the permittee. C, agree to pay for any equipment or supplies provided to them by the town. Any comment on that? Okay, moving on to the conditional use permit for the planning board. Understanding that the conditional use permit in the ordinance is, would be followed on top of this here. The planning board conditional use permit, if issued, shall require the applicant to demonstrate by means of a written descriptive plan, addressing the standards of this article, that adequate facilities shall be provided at the site of the event in order to protect the public and safety of the people who are attending the event, including, one, adequate waste disposal facilities; two, adequate firefighting rescue and police personnel, facilities, equipment, and first aid; three, adequate water supplies; four, adequate communication equipment; five, demonstrate by means of a written descriptive plan that adequate onsite parking spaces will be available; six, provide a detailed plan showing how crowd security and police protection of private property will be accomplished. So some of these are already included in our conditional use permit process, and so they would, they would be all intermeshed here. That's the way this has been, yes, Jake?
I just have a question on the performance guarantee. So in that section, it says that the selectmen are going to get one, but then back...
Wait a minute, what, where are you now?
Sorry, in the section up above. The select board may be denied or grant the permit.
A, a post a performance guarantee?
Right, and the amount to be equal to the public cost. But back on the requirements of the conditional use permit, it also says that they're going to post a performance guarantee bond. Does the planning board collect that or does the select board?
Select board, we have, do not have the authority to collect.
So should that, Section 3 or D3, I guess it is, should that wording be put here in, underneath the select board's requirement? About that performance bond and when it gets released and all of that? Because it's not you guys, it's the select board, right? That's their permit that's doing that?
It's in the zone, aren't you saying?
Yeah. Well, we could move it over there, I mean, it's a...
I just didn't want to think people were like, you get one and they get one and...
It's referenced in two places, and perhaps you're saying it should only be referenced in one place?
Yeah, just that...
Okay.
Just, I guess, look at it.
Okay, anything else in that particular? If not, moving on to inspections. The person in charge of the site, which is the subject of an application for an event permit or a site that has received an event permit, shall admit any officer, official, or employee of the town authorized to make inspections of the site for compliance with this article or any other ordinance or statute any reasonable time that admission is requested. Two, in addition to any other penalty which may be provided, the select board may revoke the event permit of any permittee in the town who refuses to permit entry by any such officer, official, or employee or who interferes with such officer, official, or employee while in the performance of his or her duty. Any comments? Appeals, the final one. Any person who has denied an event permit issued by the select board or a conditional use permit issued by the planning board who objects to any conditions in a permit granted to that person by the select board or planning board may appeal the decision to the Board of Appeals within five days. After a public hearing, the Board of Appeals shall apply the provisions of the section's requirement of a conditional use permit or events permit for mass gatherings above and affirm or reverse the decision of the select board for the planning board. It's pretty basic. Any other comments by anybody?
My question is, I don't know if you're going to do, but on the previous page regarding the state license quotation from the rules...
This is Jack, just...
Jack Partridge again, from somewhere.
Evergreen.
Evergreen.
We all know this now.
Which section you...
All right, it's on my page four.
The state license.
State license. Quoting numbers and details out of a state law is hazardous in a lower municipality. You might want to generalize it, because if they change it, then ours will be wrong. And it's quite, I mean, the attorneys can more decide that. They may want you to generalize that to say refer to X section rather than quoting actual numbers. That's just a minutiae thing?
Okay. David?
Five working days instead of five days, five business days.
Five business days, good point.
Oh, yeah, for appeals board, yeah, that makes sense.
Maybe just putting five business days instead of five work, five days. Because I'm not sure how often the appeals board gets together.
They get together whenever they have an appeal.
Whenever they have an appeal, yeah, so...
Okay, within five business days, good point, thank you. All right, I think that concludes the evening. I appreciate all of you staying far, it's been a lengthy one. But that's what happens when we have public hearings with referendum questions. We will, we will not be discussing this as a board...
No, that's spelled wrong, just there. All the rest were spelled correctly.
Oh, okay, oh, thank you.
Permittee.
We will not meet again until December 1st.
First.
First. And this will be, we'll have a public hearing for Mr. Stockweather. And we will all, planning board members, be prepared to talk about which of these changes we want to make and which we don't, because we have to pass this on to the select board so they can hold their public hearing.
Alan, yes.
And on that note, it looks like the, only about availability we have would be December 11th, so, for a public hearing.
For you, for you folks?
For the board, yeah, without going into the new year.
Yeah, because Patty would have to have it by January 9th.
Yeah. So with all the other, because we're off, our, we're off on, well, Christmas, New Year's, they all fall on Thursdays.
So when we meet the first, we'll pass it to you for the fourth, and you'll advertise for the 11th.
Yeah.
Okay, now...
Yeah, perfect.
Now, the, what was I just going to say? I don't know, I forgot what I was going to say. Whatever. It will be a rush for all of us, but in order to get it on to the March town meeting, and this, I mean, if we don't make it, we can always do it in November.
Or June.
Or June. In fact, in some ways, when you think about it, I don't think there's going to be any thing happening that if there's a better representation of the town at November elections than there is at March town meeting. And I, for all my time on the, this board, I've always preferred, if at all possible, to have any really major consequential referendum questions in November instead of March. Because, you know, any town meeting can be packed, just stating the way it is. And I think we get a better representation in November.
The only thing I would just advise is we would still be with a single piece of paper permit for whatever they want to do this until that point in time, because we don't have an ordinance. So we still are following and mandated to our current permit, so...
Right, but you are, but you also need to establish a fee. You can establish a fee anytime you want.
Right, right, but I mean, as far as a conditional use permit for these large gatherings, until this goes in front, whether it passes or not, they still don't have to come in. That's, so, that's the only reason why I would see precedence for March.
In March, would it be by secret ballot or would it be at the town meeting?
No, it'd be, it would be on the vote prior to...
On ballot, it would be on the ballot.
It's not on the warrant article.
Yeah, it's on the ballot the week before.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, yes, Bonnie?
I'd just like to ask the, Bonnie Lord, I'd like to ask the planning board to please reconsider your idea of not having a sidewalk for the proposed property tonight.
We've already been there twice.
Well, I hear you, but it is going to be a public hearing that night, December 1st, is what you said. And for the public not to have had a chance to see that site, I'm just saying it would be more consistent, at least to have the invitation. Be there for the public, please.
Any other comments? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely, I motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Me, second.
Victoria seconded. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
It's definitely past my bedtime.